That we're calling the Board of Trustees monthly meeting to order. This is June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh, this is um, we'll do our, our roll call. Um, I don't know if I should call you Secretary or Ms.
Either Ms. is fine.
All right, we'll take, we'll take roll call.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Annette Morton.
Here.
Uduwak Jo Entuk.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
I.
All right, we have a quorum of the board in attendance. Um, do we have any public comments on closed session agenda items?
No comments submitted.
Anyone here would like to speak in closed session? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to adjourning into closed session. We do have uh, four matters uh, to address. And so at this time, we'll adjourn into closed session. Thanks, everybody. That we have to make. Uh, we do have one point four, one point five, and one point six in closed session. But before going into one point four, um, we have uh, with respect to one potential case in closed session related to item one point five, a dispute arose in connection with food service management services previously provided by Genuine Foods at the liberal arts campus and trades technology community learning campus. The district terminated the contract with Genuine Foods effective July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Thereafter, joining Genuine Foods submitted invoices for amounts that exceed what the district believes are reasonable and appropriate based on existing facts and circumstances and based on advice of legal counsel. This is exposure to litigation in connection with this matter, which we will discuss in closed session. And with that, we will now adjourn into closed session and we'll see folks about five thirty. Thanks so much. See you soon.
Lauren, you ready? All right. We're reconvening the meeting into open session. It is now 5:34. At this time, we are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I can ask our new student trustee to lead us this evening. Trustee Lea Tawa.
The land acknowledgement or the pledge of allegiance? Oh, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Thank you so much. Moving now to item 2.3 is land acknowledgement. Long Beach City College acknowledges our presence on the traditional ancestral lands of the Gaberlino-Tungva peoples. This land remains unceded territory. We acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from these territories. Long Beach City College honors and respects the Gaberlino and Tungva ancestors and their connection to the land today. Moving on to 2.4 is African ancestry acknowledgement. We honor the gifts, resilience, and sacrifice of our Black ancestors, particularly those who toiled the land and built the institutions that established the nation's wealth and freedom, despite never being compensated nor fully realizing their own sovereignty. We acknowledge this exploitation of not only labor but our common humanity and through these, this process are working to repair some of the harms done both by the public and private sectors. Because of their work, we are here and we invest in the descendants of their legacy. We'll now go to Secretary Zale to take roll call again.
Student trustee Lea Tawa.
Present.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Annette Morton.
Here.
Uduwakjo Intuk.
Sunnyzia.
Present.
We have a quorum of the board. Moving to item 2.6 is our mission and vision statement. It's an opportunity for us as a board to focus on why we're here and our objective of the meeting tonight. 2.7 is our board rules. We have unanimously adopted rules that govern our behavior and process of the board. We do follow Robert's Rules of Order along with the Brown Act. And there's an attachment of the rules to board docs for folks who are interested. We're now moving to item 2.8, public comment on the agenda. This is where the public has an opportunity for a total of three minutes per speaker and a maximum 20 minutes per subject to speak on items on tonight's board agenda. I do have several cards that I'll call up folks to come and speak at the microphone here. I have Pastor Kevin Kang, Yoshi Kuramoto, Reverend Mary Ann, and Reverend Allison. We'll go the first speaker, Pastor Kevin Kang. And the other folks, if you want to queue up along the wall, you may, or I'll call the name again. But Pastor Kevin Kang was first for three minutes.
Is it okay if Pastor Mary Ann goes first? Sorry, we have a tech issue.
Yeah, that's fine. If you're there first.
Thank you so much.
We can have Kevin come next.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Reverend Mary Ann. I am a United Methodist pastor and I serve and I live in this community. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, specifically in reflecting on your mission statement. As I was reading on your website, your mission statement, one sentence in particular really stood out to me. "Long Beach City College is committed to empowering our students to become active, ethical participants in their learning, as well as in the democratic structures that give them voice and agency in shaping their society and world." When I read that statement, I felt that that statement was not just theoretical. It was a promise and it was a call to action. And that promise is actually why many of us are standing here this evening, to stand in solidarity with the students in the back who have consistently and courageously taken this mission statement at its word, to speak up for what is right and to call for their university to meaningfully support and to stand with them as they grieve and as they agonize about the staggering and ongoing violence happening in Gaza. I suppose to work and to ensure that LBCC continues to live up to its great values. I love your mission statement. To empower and guide all its students to thrive and to learn and to make meaningful steps to live into that promise. In 2024, you made some great decisions to go ahead and start this ethical journey with your students to divest from some companies that have relationships with weapon man- your students to divest from some companies that have relationships with weapon manufacturers, and that is great. What we are here today to encourage and to lift our voices is to empower, encourage you to take that next step, to put in place an intentional, formal, ethical guideline with, in your investment strategy policy. I applaud you for the work that you are doing to continue to empower your students, all of your students. And while there's so much violence going on in the world right now and it can feel so far away from where we are, it's actually not far away at all. We've talked to many Palestinian students here in this community who are continuing to grieve and who look at this mission statement as a beacon of hope, that there is something they can continue to do, to speak out and to help shape their world. So tonight, as we begin by reflecting on this mission statement again as a person of faith, as someone who cares about the well-being of all students, who cares about the horrific ongoing violence happening around our world, and who is inspired by your mission statement and hoping that it continues to live up to its word, I just again want to encourage you to have meaningful dialogue with these students, to take that next courageous step forward, to put in place a formal ethical consideration so that going forward, this can be a place of learning for all students who can feel safe and know that their future here at LBCC is grounded in wisdom and care for all and not weapons and violence. I have many young ones at my church who are getting ready to, to come to your, your wonderful college, and I have many church members who have been here and who have spoken of their legacy and their care and their time here. So I thank you for listening with your hearts and your minds, and a couple of us will speak to this tonight, but thank you and thank you for having us. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Mary Ann. Next, we'll go to Pastor Kevin Kang. And I do want to note, we typically have a timer for three-minute countdown on our screen that we don't have tonight, but Board Secretary Zale will announce when you hit thirty seconds left in your three minutes. Go ahead, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Kang, pastor at Crescent Valley United Methodist Church, and I'm here as a Christian pastor. And my, my ask is that Long Beach Community College continues and actively implements an investment policy that doesn't buy into companies profiting from the ongoing genocide in Gaza and the decades of long and illegal occupations in Palestine. Our company, our community's money, it shouldn't bankroll weapons and bombs and the machinery of ethnic cleansing. For the past seventy-five years, Palestinians have endured a brutal occupation, robbed of their land and their rights and their futures. And what's happening in Gaza is not a war, because wars are fought between armies, but it's genocide, it's systemic, systematic, deliberate, and it's devastating. And we see children starving and we see families being wiped out and humanitarian aid being blocked and bombed and starvation being used as a weapon. And we see collective punishment on a mass scale. The school statement from October nine, twenty twenty-three, it's not only deeply dishonest, but it erases decades of dispossession and ignore the reality of apartheid, ethnic cleansing, and occupation. And by framing the violence as a one-sided terrorist attack, you perpetuate a false narrative and send a message that Palestinians' lives don't matter to this institution. This is shameful and it's complicity. So let me be clear. Faith communities of color are watching. Across the country, faith leaders have called for divestment and end to the occupation and justice for Palestinians, because our faith and our histories compel us to stand with the oppressed and to speak out against genocide, occupation, and militarized violence. Our companies know, our communities know that what it means to be dispossessed and dehumanized, and we refuse to be silent in the face of these crimes. So I ask that this board implements investment policies that do not cause harm to the Palestinian people and to others who are vulnerable. And I further ask that you retract your dishonest statement publicly acknowledging the decades of occupation and the current starvation campaign in Gaza.
You have thirty seconds.
And the call for an immediate end to the genocide and the policies that enable it. So history will remember where you stood. Faith communities of color will remember where you stood. So will you side with justice or will you continue to be complicit in crimes against humanity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Reverend Allison.
Good evening, President Intuck and members of the board of trustees. My name is Reverend Allison Mark, and I serve as the senior pastor at Faith United Methodist Church in the South Bay, Torrance, to be exact. As a pastor, I'm called to shepherd not just a church, but a community. And our community includes students and families who attend Long Beach City College, El Camino, and community colleges and state colleges throughout the region. Faith UMC actually is a historically Japanese-American congregation founded by families who lived through the injustice of incarceration during World War II. They were American citizens placed behind barbed wires. Their families were separated, rationed, surveilled, and stripped of their dignity. And yet they emerged from those camps with a deepened commitment to justice, not only for themselves but for all communities. That legacy runs deep in our DNA. And when we see what is happening in Gaza and in Palestine today, it's a history that repeats itself in the most harmful ways. Our task here tonight as clergy is to ask the board to do no harm. It's simple, you think. So when we witness the courage of students who have organized for the past two years nonviolently, faithfully, and relentlessly to call for divestment from companies that profit off of genocide, we see not just resistance, we see love. As a faith leader, I am here tonight because I believe these students are living out the very values that we strive to instill: compassion, moral courage, and public accountability. Their demands are rooted in love from their peers for humanity and for the sacred right to education. Their message tonight is clear: to stop the money, adopt a policy of ethical investment, to refuse to fund companies that are complicit in genocide. Even if no money has been invested yet, you can still draw the line. You can make the call. Ethical investments puts the board in charge and in control. Using your voice. We tell our students to use their voices, but you as a board, we invite you to and ask you to and deplore you to retract the previous war in Israel statement, acknowledge that ethnic cleansing and scholasticide unfolding in Palestine, to affirm one group does not mean to erase another. It means affirming the full dignity of all. And to show your support, please stand with your students, be their partners in the fight for justice, because education itself is under siege, and you all know that. And we know you understand what is at stake. Your students are who you, they look to, they look to you.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
To support them in this time. Your students look to you, the board, to support them. This is not radical, it's not moral, it is faithful, it is necessary. And I want to say clearly that these students are not alone. We, as their communities, their churches, their mentors, and their families, we stand with them. Thank you for listening. May you leave with courage and may justice guide your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Yoshi Kuramoto.
Hello, my name is Yoshi. I'm the pastor at San Pedro United Methodist Church, a member of the Holy Land Task Force of the CalPAC Conference, and most importantly, a supporter of LBCC students and Palestinian human rights. We understand that what is happening in Gaza, though geographically distant from where we stand, is deeply intertwined with and influenced by the politics and economy of this nation. Our tax money pays for the bombs that decimate the lives of innocents, including children. And many of our institutions invest in corporations aiding and abetting the ongoing genocide. These are shameless and cruel acts that are fundamentally racist and inhumane. As one who prays to fully embrace the values of the gospel that celebrate love, justice, truth-telling, and the fundamental worth of human life, I speak to you all with a committed moral conscience. In solidarity with the students' persistent and faithful demands, our first ask is for Long Beach City College to adopt a policy, ethical policy, not to invest in corporations aiding and abetting genocide. All you really need is a human heart and a soul's compass to affirm the worth of people over profits. Secondly, we ask for LBCC to retract its statements made on the war in Israel. While on the surface, it appears neutral and objective, there seems to be an intentional avoidance of acknowledging the Israeli crimes before October seventh, all the way back to the Nakba of the ethnic cleansing, land theft, apartheid practices, Palestinian prisoners without due process, and the worst of them all, genocide. By intentionally avoiding these truths, the statements inevitably erase the voice of Palestinian, therefore, is racist, abusive, and harmful. If education and scholarship are valued by this institution, which I believe it is, it would be fair to name the scholasticide in Palestine. There are no schools left in Gaza, and that is a systemic violence toward an entire civilization that will indeed have an impact for generations to come. So I pray that you hear your students and you hear this community and choose courage and goodness. Thank you.
That concludes the speaker cards I have for public comment on agenda items. Was there any other public comment submitted or anyone else who would like to speak on agenda items during public comment? Seeing here none, we are going to go back on agenda item to two point nine. So we went two point, actually, we're right on chat. Two point, after two point eight is two point nine. So we did public comment. Next, we're doing a report on a closed session. So we, I do have two items to report out from the board in our first closed session, and we will have a second closed session at the end of this meeting. But let's see here on. On closed session agenda item one point five. On closed session agenda item one point five, we have a public report out that the board agreed to a settlement with Genuine Foods, as approved unanimously by the board, for a total amount of fourteen thousand dollars. Also on one point five, we did have a unanimous agreement. Oh, no, I didn't get the name. Is that one point six? Also, sorry, not one point five. The second report out is on agenda item one point six. The board unanimously agreed on a settlement agreement for the pending litigation, Government Code Section five four nine five eight point six nine subsection D one, the case of Danny Sue Dimar versus Long Beach Community College District EEOC, case number six two two three two six. So that was a unanimous settlement agreement by the board. And that is all the report outs from closed session. At this time, we will have a second closed session at the end of our open session this evening. We now go to item two point nine, reordering the agenda if there's any items to be requested and voted on to move in the agenda. Seeing here none, we're going to move to section three. This is three point one, is recognition. Our planning committee for Pride Month, we do have Dr. Jerome Hunt will speak on the planning committee. Dr. Hunt, the, well, here or there? Yeah, sure. Both mics work. We'll go to Dr. Hunt on the planning committee for Pride Month. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Board President. On behalf of the Pride Planning Committee, as well as Pride LGBTQIA+ Employee Resource Groups, we want to thank the board and the superintendent president for all your continued support for the LGBTQIA+ students, faculty, and staff here on campus. We've had a very productive year this year. We decided to not host a number of programs during Pride Month because obviously we're in summer session, so what we decided to do is to spread out our programs across the whole entire academic year and do intersectional programming in conjunction with our other Pride Month, I'm sorry, with our other Culture Heritage Month programming. And we had great success in creating these intersectional programs, and it looks like this will be something that we will continue going forward. We also saw this year a huge increase in participants in terms of our lavender graduation. We've grown from five students about four years ago to having close to fifty RSVPs for this year. We've heard from many students that we are creating a safe, welcoming space where they can feel seen, valued, and wanted here on campus, and we're very proud of that. And one of the ways that we've also been able to do that is through our Pride Scholars Learning Community, which is still, you know, trying to find its footing, but we do have strong, dedicated students that are part of that learning community, and we are happy to report that we do have a student success coach for our Pride Scholars, which is a really good thing for this learning community. And our, our new student success coach is John John Gossisso, who just joined us this month. So we're really excited about all the things that are happening to really show value to not only our students but our faculty and staff who are members of the LGBTQIA+ community. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Round of applause. Thank you for all your work. Thank you to the committee. We're going to item three point two, our outgoing ASB president, Shaminique Harris. We want to, we know we missed you last month. Welcome back to your final meeting, but we want to recognize and thank you for all of your service to the college and the community. And if you want to start off, if you have any comments you would like to share with us, and then we'll, we'll hear from the trustees and we have something to give you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Oh my goodness, I, I'm still soaking up everything from I started here in the spring of twenty twenty-three until now, that I finally graduated as a, you know, I'm a non-traditional college student. I just told, I was talking to Mr. Carl earlier and I said, I never really talked about this before, but I actually started my college/university journey in twenty nineteen. So now I, I'm really, I'm really excited. I'm really excited, I'm really sad at the, at the same time because I'm leaving. But to see that I have come this far at Long Beach City College, and I could also say proudly that I am a product of the mission, vision, and values of Long Beach City College, because I utilize all the services here and I, you know, I, I am fully inclined, like, I am really into my academics so much that I don't even really talk about it so much, how much I advocate for all this stuff, you wouldn't know how much, how serious I am about my academics here at Long Beach City College. And that's why I maintain a four-point-oh GPA each semester, even though I was overwhelmed doing all of this leadership stuff, working on campus, I still find a way, because I knew that Long Beach City College has a lot of resources here for students to succeed. I utilize all these services here at Long Beach City College throughout my time to get to the next step. I also, you know, get connected with officials on campus. It's basically everyone, I could say. I build a really good, you know, relationship with everyone, whereas I've been through a lot of low moments in my life at Long Beach City College, but there is always someone to uplift me, empower me, for me to get back up and keep it moving. So I really appreciate that. I'm going to miss it here, because as a non-traditional student, I never knew I would be standing here today. I never knew I'd be ASB president, I never knew I'd be a president's ambassador for Long Beach City College. I, I never see myself doing all of these stuff, but I took a chance. And also, you know, being that role model for students, letting them know that all it takes is for you to take, take a step or take a chance at something, be the change that you want to see. I knew I came here, I came here on a mission and I had a vision and I have completed what I came here for. So I really appreciate everything that everyone at Long Beach City College has done for me here and all the support that I have gotten since I've been here. I, I, it's a lot of names to call, so I can't call everyone name right now, but I really love and appreciate everything that I've gotten and learned here, because now I will be moving forward to a four-year university, or we, you know, continue with my leadership journey there as well. But you guys could count on me any day as a Long Beach City College student, a successful, thriving Long Beach City College student, a non-traditional student, an older student coming back to school, like, all of these different things that you hear students says, the whys and the why not, like, I have hit all of them at Long Beach City College because we have enough support here for a student to thrive and succeed. I did that. I could tell any student how to get through it, because I have been through it, and I'm standing here today, successful with my associates on my transcript right now, so I feel really good about that. But all in all, I'm going to miss it here. I'm really going to miss it. I'm really going to miss it. This is my first college experience, so it's, it was, it was a rocky road. It wasn't a bed of roses for me, but I found my place. It took some time, but I found my place here. I found my, I found the spaces that I belong in. I've never been turned away from any, you know, environment or anything that I wanted to participate in. I've never been told that, hey, you cannot do it, so you must stay out. I've always been encouraged to, like, uplift and just keep going. I know there's a lot of things going on in the world sometimes, and I need, you know, I need that support. And I thank, I thank everyone that has reached out to me and everyone that I go call on to help me to get through the times here at Long Beach City College. But most importantly, again, I never forget to, I talked to, my first meeting with Dr. Carl and Dr. Munoz, they said, make sure you focus on your classes, and if you have to skip a meeting or something, it's okay to do that. And I always make sure I put my classes first, and I never, I'm never skipping anything. I'll reach out and say, hey, I can't be there. And I just want students to know that you could be involved, but communicate. Communicate, the support is there for you, the position is not running away, communicate, your grades come first. That's what you're here for. We're here to uplift the institution, to get our good grades, so the school can, you know, have a better name. So I, oh my goodness, I can't believe it, but thank you guys so much for everything. It's, it's a bittersweet moment for me, and I will be coming back here. Whenever I come back to California, I'll come back to visit you guys. I'll keep in contact with everyone that I have numbers, I've been following different officials on LinkedIn, or if it's on Facebook or Instagram or something, I will definitely keep in contact and let you guys know what's going on, because this is where I started my leadership journey as a college student, a non-traditional college student, I always say indirect matriculating student, could use that one as well, but this is where I started my journey. And I'll always remember all of you here that have supported me. And I'll end out on this, my time here at Long Beach City College too, as an international student, I'm just not a regular student here, I'm an international student. I've been through a lot of struggles, not because of the school that pushed me through a lot of struggle, but because of the immigration policies that are in place that we barely have control over. But I was able to get through them by, you know, assistance of scholarship here on campus, having a job here on campus. So all of those things have helped me to thrive here on campus, and I never, you know, let down LBCC. I always keep it moving, keep it going, and maintaining my grades. And I think that is really important to, you know, keep the school going, uplifting and everything. So thank you guys so much for your continued support. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Shaminique. We're going to take some comments from the board members at this time. We'll go to trustee Zia.
Shaminique, I want to congratulate you on so many levels. You're such a stellar student and such an exemplar of what it is to go through adversity and to prevail. What I really enjoy most about your experience here that you've shared, it's so rich, because there's so many intersections between, like you said, non-traditional, international students. You deal with so much more, you plow through that thicket. And you've really offered such great optimism and emotional ballast for the rest of your cohort. I get a lot out of listening to you. I learn from you, and I'm so proud of you. I know I'm going to see you go to places, you already are, and I just can't wait to see and hear about your continued success. And please do remain in contact. I'm still in touch with the students from 12 years ago, who have grown and have babies now, have families, and have gone to graduate school. So please do connect with us, and thank you for making us proud.
Thank you.
Dr. Baxter?
Shaminique, I want to congratulate you, and thank you for me getting to know you a great deal. And I have admired you from day one, and you've really performed well as a student, and that's most important, but also as a leader, as a campus leader, as a president's ambassador, and always wanting to make sure LBCC is at the forefront. And I wish you the very, very best. You're going to Berkeley, right?
No, I'm going to Coppin State in Baltimore, Maryland.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, have fun in Baltimore. Baltimore is a wonderful city. I've been to a lot of cities. And so congratulations, and I know you're going to be very successful, and keep in touch with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Go Dr. Morton, and then trustee Malu.
Thank you, Vice President, Dr. Morton. Shaminique, you already make Long Beach City College proud, and I know that you will continue to make us proud, knowing that you carry the name of Long Beach City College with you everywhere you go, and knowing that you will take us with you to Baltimore gives me joy, because I know that you will do great things there, and you will be back here to tell us all about it, and we're going to continue to see great things from you. I had the privilege of serving alongside you for several months when I was board president in the fall, and you and I attended lots of events together, and I got to know you really well. And every single encounter that I had with you was professional, polite, you were so engaged. I always felt that you were there in person, but also in heart. So you will be deeply missed. We wish you the best. Please continue to keep in touch with us. And when we do have to go out there, Baltimore is not that far from some of the places and spaces that we occupy, so hopefully we can connect somewhere on the East Coast.
Yes.
Good luck.
Shaminique, congratulations, and thank you so much for your leadership. Your leadership here has been, has made a huge impact, not just for students that you know of, but for those who are watching and are looking for inspiration, they have looked to you. And all that you've done to promote the school, to let them know that they are seen and heard, and their resources to help, that's critically important, not only by what you say, but how you perform and how you've managed yourself and how you've carried yourself throughout this entire journey. I can't wait to see all of the success that you're going to have and the enjoyment you're going to have from reaching all that you have set out to achieve. So congratulations. I wish you all the luck, and I know you're going to do well, and we look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
All right. And Shaminique, thank you. We did say a lot of nice things about you last month as well.
I heard.
So thanks for coming back.
I did tell them to wait until you were here.
But echoing my colleague's sentiments, thank you for your commitment to the college, to yourself. A lot of times going to college is an investment in yourself and a sacrifice of other things you could be doing that you're not, because you're committed to yourself and building your, building up. You know, research shows folks who transfer, students who transfer with an associate degree are 60% more likely to get their bachelor's degree, because you already had a success. You already have a degree at hand, you know the process to apply for graduation. And so we wish you the best. We know you're going to graduate. We're so happy. It's a full ride scholarship.
Yes.
Saving on those student loans. Yeah, and we look forward to what you do. We hope one day you'll join the Alumni Hall of Fame. We hope one day you'll come back and tell us about your journey and what you did, and that's our job, is to help you have a success here, but be more successful in life as you move forward.
Yes, thank you.
So thank you for all you've done. We have a small token of our appreciation, a certificate of recognition
Thank you.
that we're going to provide you, and I'll read it out, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And we have some flowers for you. In recognition of your exemplary services as ASB president, Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees recognizes and appreciates the time dedication you gave as you served as the ASB president at Long Beach City College. The board wishes you much success on your next chapter of your academic career and dreams as you go, we know you will go far.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, big round of applause for Shaminique. And of course, you got to get one more photo with us, if you don't mind.
No problem.
We're going to adjourn for a moment to take a photo with Shaminique. All right, thank you, everybody. We're going to go now to our standing report, section four. We're going to ask to 4.1, our new ASB president's report, Prince Bass, for five minutes. Prince, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. First, I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to our Superintendent President Dr. Munoz, Board President Dr. Intuak, trustees, faculty, staff, my ASB cabinet, Shaminique Harris for recruiting me, the students of Long Beach City College, and the exceptional leadership of the LBCC Foundation. Your dedicate, your dedication doesn't just keep LBCC running, it lights up a pathway of opportunity, hope, and potential for all of us. Just six months ago, I was homeless, sleeping in my car. But today, I stand before you as a student body president of this incredible institution. This transformation didn't happen by accident. It's a direct result of LBCC's belief in second chances and building a community where support isn't a privilege, it's a cornerstone. My journey is just one of many, and the best part is a story that can be repeated, because of the foundation you've created with your unwavering support. This past year, your ASB dangerous dream, we delivered. We launched initiatives rooted in dignity, culture, and connection. We introduced ASB After Dark, a monthly event on both campuses for our evening warriors, balancing full-time work and full-time classes. But we're not stopping there, we're expanding it. The Sneaker Ball, hosted by Umoja, was more than a dance. It was a celebration of identity and pride. Students in sneakers and suits coming together to feel seen and valued. We offered Cuts and Convos, a program hosted by A-2 men and justice scholars that paired free haircuts with counseling, because sometimes healing starts in a barber's chair. And we are hoping this becomes a full-time resource that will lead to an improvement in grades, retention, and success. We celebrated community with Taste of, with Taste of LBC at Taste of Soul, beautiful culinary experiences that honor our diverse cultural heritage. Huge thanks to the chefs and students who fed us more than just food, they fed our spirit. At commencement 2025, 3,200 students graduated, and 1,738 of us were walking proudly, not just as graduates, but as a part of a legacy we built and one that will continue long after we leave. This year, we celebrated a total of 75 student clubs at the ICC Awards, the largest turnout in LBCC history. Why? Because student life is not an afterthought. It's essential. It's where we learn leadership, build courage, and form lasting connections, lasting connections. Special thanks to the ICC President Sam Moro for making that and so many other things happen. When uncertainty loomed for our immigrant and undocumented students, we didn't flinch, we didn't hesitate, we stood in unwavering solidarity, not in just words, but with actions. Legal clinics, red cards, safe spaces, and culturally competent mental health support. I said it then, and I'll say it again, we protect our own, we are family. But we didn't stop there. We heard the call for baby changing stations, and we are now installing baby changing stations on our campus. And our initiative not, not only has not been adopted by our school, but it's an official resolution by the SSC. Not only do we set ambitious, ambitious goals, we follow through on them. And there's more. We fought for student housing, and now there's 424 beds being built right here on campus for students facing homelessness. This isn't just change, this is tangible, life-changing progress. And today, I'm proud to share that we officially launched our Parenting Student Hub at the TCC campus, TTC campus. This space is dedicated to students who are balancing the incredible journey of raising children while pursuing a degree. We see you, we support you, and now you have a place built just for you, because no parent should have to choose between their family and their future. Looking ahead, our work is far from done. We'll continue fighting for College Hour to give students a much-needed break without academic pressure. We'll push for free printing to relieve financial stress. We'll improve ADA-compliant restrooms to ensure our campuses is accessible, our campus is accessible to all. We'll fight for fully stocked hygienic women's restrooms, because every student deserves the, deserves to feel respected and valued. None of these are extravagant asks, they are small things, but they make a huge difference. Because when students feel heard, they don't just survive, they lead. We also propose more, more on-campus food, because hunger should never be a barrier to learning, barrier to learning. But we also didn't just focus on our own campus. ASB organized a beach cleanup to ensure our waters are clean and safe, not for us, but for the dolphins and living creatures. We are building a future where every student matters, no matter their background, circumstances, or circumstances, they know they belong. A future where grades rise, morale lifts, and lives are transformed for the better. This is just the beginning of something extraordinary. Let's get to work. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Give a round of applause for Prince. Welcome. And we have now figured out our timer, so on the big screen, you get a big red countdown when you hit your time. And we'll try to give you a heads up for that. Next, we're going to our new student trustee, trustee Pise Lea Tawa. All right, I got it. Welcome, and five minutes to give a report and introduce yourself.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Talofalava and fakalofalajiatu. My name is Pise Lea Tawa, and I'm currently serving as LBCC's new student trustee. When people see my name on a paper, they kind of have a hard time, so I want to give you guys a little, you know, tutorial on how to say my name. So Pise, my first name is pronounced Pise, and then my last name, you do it as laying down a towel, so Lea Tawa, and put the word uh at the end, Lea Tawa. So Pise Lea Tawa. First and foremost, before I share a little bit about myself and goals that I have as student trustee, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to the Long Beach City College student body for entrusting me with the incredible responsibility of serving as your student trustee. This role is not just an honor, it's a commitment to listen, to uplift, and to be steadfast advocate for each and every one of you. I am here to ensure your voices are heard and your experiences shape the future of our campus. Thank you so much. I am a proud Samoan, Nuanian, first-generation, and non-traditional college student from the beautiful city of Compton. I was previously on the pre-med track in hopes of transferring to Howard University for the radiation therapy program to become a pediatric radiologist. However, my experiences here at Long Beach City College, specifically with working for the MONA program, has helped me realize that my true passion was never about medicine or science, but in uplifting others, helping them feel empowered, help them to feel seen and valued, especially those who may feel overlooked. With this, I am currently, I have currently transitioned into becoming a sociology major here at Long Beach City College, looking to transfer to a four-year university for public policy. I am passionate about ensuring that everyone knows that they matter, and I am dedicated as Long Beach City College's first-ever Basifika identifying student trustee to bring representation for the Basifika and Asian Pacific Islander Dasi community in spaces where our voices and presence are often missing. As student trustee, my primary trustee, my primary goal is to continue to truly cultivate the sense of belonging that Long Beach City College proudly advertises, a campus where every student feels welcome, valued, and empowered. I'm committed to boosting student engagement in campus life and governance, improving campus resources, and building a vibrant, supportive community for all. Looking ahead, my new end goal is to transfer and eventually return to my beautiful hometown of Compton, where I hope to continue serving my community. I aspire to serve on the Board of Trustees for the Compton Unified School District, sit on the Compton City Council, and ultimately work my way up to Congress. My journey as student trustee at Long Beach City College is just the beginning, a foundation for my lifelong commitment to representation, advocacy, and ensuring that every voice, especially those from underrepresented communities, is heard and uplifted. This role is preparing me to be a stronger leader and advocate, both here on campus and in every community that I serve in the future. And I am so excited to serve here on the Board and to learn and work alongside all of you. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move to 4.3, our academic senate president's report, Dr. Jerome Hunt, for five minutes.
Good evening, Board President Intuoc, Superintendent President Munoz, distinguished board members and colleagues. I have a few updates to faculty leadership to share with you all tonight. In terms of the Senate Executive Committee, the Senate, sorry, the Senate held its elections for Executive Committee last month, and I'm proud to announce the Senate Executive Committee for next year. I will be returning as president. Our new assistant president is Anjali Francois. Our campus rep is Haley Nguyen. Our ASB rep is Veronica Najobi Carter, and our legislative liaison is Christine Charles Bohannon. In terms of faculty coordinators, Jeff Wheeler will be returning as our honors coordinator. Kristin Moreno will be serving as our adult learner coordinator, and Melvin Cowell will be serving as our online education coordinator. And that concludes my report for the evening. So thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with everybody next year. Thanks for the update. Next, we're moving to item 4.4, our classified senate president report with Ben Chase. Ben is not here today. No report. All right. We're moving to section five, our superintendent's report with Dr. Munoz.
Thank you, Board President Intuoc. Good evening, trustees, members of the campus community. I am really excited and proud to present a report of celebrations and congratulations from this past month. So to kick us off, I want to talk a little bit about all the great things that happened on campus during Pride Month. Happy Pride Month, everyone. We celebrated our very first send-off, which was an all-day drop-in event at the SJIC. The inclusive pride flag will fly over both campuses throughout June. I want to thank colleagues and students who added Pride events all year long through our Heritage Month celebrations, specifically Dr. Sonia de la Tore Inigaz, who's with us today, Dr. Eric Becera, and our Office of Student Equity. Want to give a big congratulations to Avery Aguirre. Congratulations to LBCC student Avery Aguirre. The Point Foundation named them a Coach Dream It Real Community College Scholar, one of only 101 students nationwide selected for this prestigious scholarship, which recognizes academic excellence, community leadership, and a commitment to uplifting LGBTQ+ communities. Avery will receive $4,800 in educational support for the 2025-2026 school year and has been invited to attend Dream Day 2025 in New York City with all expenses covered. Let's give Avery a big round of applause. I also want to acknowledge one of our distinguished faculty members, Shamika Simpson, who is being recognized and has received the Ethnic and Multicultural Information Exchange Roundtable's 2025 Distinguished Librarian Award. This award recognizes significant accomplishments in library services that are national or international in scope, and that include improving, spreading, and promoting multicultural services in libraries. In addition, Shamika was chosen as one of this year's featured teaching librarians by the Association of College and Research Libraries. Congratulations, Professor Simpson. Speaking of Shamika and the excellent work of the library, we held a ceremony to officially rename the Liberal Arts Campus Library in honor of LBCC's first Black librarian and academic senate president, Bobby Smith. It was a full house. We had Bobby Smith's family, friends, and community members in support for the grand opening, and you can see some amazing photos from the event. So again, as we begin to start our planning for our beautiful new library resource center that we hope to see in the next few years come to fruition, you'll see even a more enhanced dedication of Bobby Smith in the planning for that facility. I'm excited to share and announce that LBCC has a new associate degree program in urban planning. This reflects LBCC's commitment to shaping equitable and sustainable communities. Developed in consultation with the Long Beach Community Design Center, a nonprofit comprised of leading area urban planners, architects, and representatives from Cal Poly Pomona, we are one of the first to have a program like this. This program gives a solid foundation in urban design skills, land use planning, and government policymaking, while learning to tackle planning challenges using industry-standard GIS software and the socioeconomic aspects of urban development. Congratulations to those who helped to get this program off the ground, including some amazing faculty such as Dr. Leslie Forhan, David Sellersar, with the Long Beach Community's Design Center's founder and executive director, and our very own vice president, Dr. Lee Douglas. I know we heard from her early and recognized her, but as the president of this college, I would be remiss without taking a moment to congratulate Shamonee Harris. Sponsored by the LBCC Office of Student Services 2024-2025, ASB president Shamonee was able to visit her future university, Coppin State, in mid-May. They rolled out the red carpet for her with tours, swag, and a meeting with the college president. I still better be your favorite college president, that's all I gotta say. We are also excited about the full ride scholarship that she will receive. Her inspirational story will be made into a feature video highlighting several of the programs she's part of, from ASB to international students and more. We are so proud of you, Shamonee. LBCC's foundation held its 40th annual golf tournament, which supports our LBCC student athletes, a sold-out tournament with 157 golfers. I want to thank our title sponsors, Cordoba Corporation, along with our 23 other corporate sponsors that made the event possible. This large fundraiser supports our LBCC athletes and programs, as well as student athlete success initiatives. We raised a net amount of $80,000 that day. Incredible. So a big shout out to Dean Tutorpe and Randy and everyone from the foundation. We were able to, I was able to host a president's open house, and so I want to thank everyone who attended President's Office Open House, which was a mixture of my birthday, it was my birthday, and it was finals week, and so I thought, what better way to celebrate than open up the president's office and celebrate together. Many of our LBCC colleagues recently completed their, excuse me, so I just want to thank everybody. Can I give a big shout out to Lauren, who helped organize the event as well? So thank you, Lauren. I want to continue some amazing news. You know, we talk a lot about belonging, and yes, belonging and mattering matters very much for our students, but it also matters for our employees. And so this year, I think, was a really impressive year with many of our LBCC colleagues completing different types of degrees. Some earned associate's degrees, some earned bachelor's degrees, some earned master's degrees, and some even earned doctorate degrees while working full-time and balancing life, just like so many of our students. So I'm not going to obviously read everyone's name off, but I do want you to take a moment and see these amazing folks that are coming across your screen who were able to reach their educational goals, and we are so proud of them. And kind of just in closing, I want to talk a little bit about our favorite day of the year. I know that we always say Disneyland's the happiest place on earth, but I will beg to differ. I think it's on June 5th, it's Long Beach City College, and we were able to celebrate our graduates. It was really beautiful. In addition to our commencement ceremony, which was held on June 5th, we also had multiple cultural graduation celebrations that are beautiful and affirming celebrations of our graduates and their accomplishments. And so I want to just acknowledge as well all those that made that possible. So Student Equity Office and the different cultural affinity groups, thank you. I want to share just a little bit about some of the numbers, in case folks are wondering. The final numbers of those that walked across the stage was 1,376. It's the largest number of students we've had participate in commencement. And every year, it gets longer. You know, I think when I first started, we were like, probably maybe 800 participants around there, and to see that number climb every year just really is a testament, not only, I think, because yes, we've seen degree completions grow over the years, but to have students say, you know, I want to show up and walk across that stage, it shows that they feel connected to this institution, and so we're very proud of that. Guests in the Stand Stadium, we had about 11,000 people come out. So if you saw those bleachers, it was packed. We awarded an honorary degree to Dr. Sean Harper, professor from USC. And just kind of final footnote, this will be LBCC's last commencement ceremony in Vet Stadium before we close that facility to make way for our new stadium sports complex. So it was a wonderful day, and congratulations again to all of our graduates. And as I say, as we always say, once a Viking, always a Viking. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Next, we are moving to our presentation sections. In section six, we have two presentations. 6.1 from Vice President Jones and 6.2 from Associate Vice President Facilities, Jeff Connell. We're going to start first with Vice President Jones on, number one, a tentative budget presentation for 2025-2026. VP Jones, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Intuoc, members of our Board of Trustees, Superintendent President Munoz, and members of our campus community. I appreciate the opportunity to share information about our tentative budget for 2025-2026. This evening, I'm going to provide a quick overview of the state's budget development cycle, the current fiscal outlook, key components of Prop 98 and the impact on community college funding, Long Beach City College's specific funding picture, our core budget assumptions and summaries, and of course, important considerations that we take into account as we plan for the future. Always, 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 I want to start with a level of appreciation. I would like to acknowledge and thank the Fiscal Services Department, to all of our accountants, our budget folks, who help sort of prepare all of the fiscal transactions in order to inform the tentative budget, Sam Chow, Canrato Duran, and of course, John Thompson, who gracefully said, hey, it's okay for you to present the tentative budget this year. Tag, you're it. So I just would like to really thank, there's a lot of work that goes into preparing the budget. They spend an incredible amount of time with me on the planning pieces, and so my thanks to them. All right. I believe it's always first important to reiterate that the budget, the state's budget is developed through a really structured year-round process. And so if you think about the fall planning process, which enters in about the September, all of the various agencies in the state start to submit system funding requests to be collected and assembled by the governor's office for a formal advocacy request. Our chancellor's office does that on behalf of the system. Of course, we wait really patiently for January 10th, so we see the release of the governor's budget. And then from that time until May, there's a lot of activity, a lot of Legislative Analyst Office, the LAO Office, a lot of advocacy that's happening in Sacramento related to a host of different priorities that happens between January and May. Of course, May is our May revise, where we see any adjustments that need to be taken into consideration that help to inform then the June assigned governor's budget. Between that point and about the late August, early September period, we are waiting for a lot of the trailer bill language that helps to kind of give us the guidance on how any funding decisions come down. And then we bring back to you all in September an adopted budget proposal, which we ask you all to adopt. All right. So our state fiscal outlook, it's a little rainy, right? We've got a little situation happening, but California does continue to be the fourth-largest economy in the world, yet it does face some fiscal headwinds. This year's May revision identified a projected $12 billion state budget deficit. Key contributors include lower-than-expected tax revenues, increased healthcare costs, the effects of federal tariffs, and other policy changes. The governor has used the term growth recession with a more projected slower economic growth. UCLA recently published its economic forecast, which reinforces for all of us to be cautious. And specifically related to the California economy, they'd shared their perspective that California is already experiencing a mild contraction, growing at half the rate of the United States. California is projected to experience more slow to negative economic growth as a result. The unemployment is projected to peak at 6.1% by the end of the year. Federal immigration policy is constraining our labor supply, which we are actually experiencing in the city of Long Beach. California housing is under pressure and elevated mortgage rates, workforce shortages, and persistent cost barriers are something that we need to consistently watch and monitor. And of course, housing affordability remains historically low. A little bit about the general fund and Prop 98 funding. So the revenue trends are largely going to be circling around what the state refers to as the big three in terms of our revenue sources, which is personal income tax, sales tax, and corporate tax, which are collectively down by $4.8 billion compared to what was projected in January with a long-term $22.7 billion reduction expected in '26, '27, and '28, '29. Prop 98 minimum guarantee was reduced by $4.6 billion across three years, so that starts in '23, '24 through '25, '26. A lot of folks ask, like, why can the state go back fiscal years? So there's a lot of, I would say, fiscal maneuvering as they are continuing to clear their books, where sometimes there are projections that didn't materialize in a previous fiscal year, that they're able to move some of those funding decisions, or maybe they have additional revenues, so that's why they always go back a fiscal year, so that reduction will happen over those three years. '25, '26, the K-14 guarantee is now $114 billion, which is down by $4.3 billion from January. There is actually a proposed reallocation that increases the TK through 12 share by $492 million, which reduces then the community college share accordingly. And of course, the public schools systems stabilization account, which many of us refer to as the rainy day fund, $8.4 billion will be fully withdrawn by June of '25, with a further $540 million deposited in '25, '26, but then also fully withdrawn within that fiscal year. And so we're watching that really closely, because those funds are used when there are gaps in the economy. All right. This one I sort of characterize as fiscal gymnastics. There's a lot of fiscal gymnastics happening on. So a little bit of highlight in terms of California community college funding. So we do have a statutory COLA of 2.3%, which is fully funded through the Student-Centered Funding Formula, or the SCIF. Long Beach City College will receive approximately $4.1 million as a result of the COLA increase. Across the state, $104.7 million goes to help fund that COLA and to fully fund the SCIF in '25, '26. One thing that's really important for Long Beach, and I think that we have done a tremendous job on, is in increasing our enrollment. And so there is a 2.35% enrollment growth funding is proposed statewide, that was higher than projected, which increases Long Beach's growth funding to $439,000 with a projected .56 growth rate. Categorical funding, most of those programs remain unchanged. COLA applies to the following programs: DSPS, EOPS, CARE, CalWorks, the mandated cost block grant in adult education. Long Beach City College receives approximately $520,000 for these programs, but I always like to note, not all of our categorical funding programs actually receive the COLA. And so if you think about And so if you think about one of our largest ones being our Student Equity and Achievement Program, our SEEP funds, when that doesn't happen, then anytime there are adjustments in salary or things like, as those grow, then funding for programmatic funding then decreases when the state does not have an equitable plan to apply the COLA across all categorical programs. Two other, three other pieces would be Prop 51 and Prop 2, capital funding. So we are very, very happy that Long Beach City College's Building B Replacement Project is included in the budget at $51.6 million. So there were 29 new projects approved, ours was one of them. There is a little bit of maneuvering related to deferrals, and a deferral just simply means that we will be, like, we receive an IOU. So that requires us to be really strategic then about our class, our cash flow. Apportionment revenue is deferred from '25, '26 to '26, '27 of $531 million, which is for LBCC, $13.7 million. So we consistently watch that, so we make sure that we're whole and we can meet all of our financial obligations. And the last point that really, really is a challenge for us is that there is no block grant funds for '25, '26 for deferred maintenance or instructional equipment, which is a significant hit to the district. I mean, there are projects and instructional needs that need to continue, and so we're going to get really creative as we're thinking through the adopted budget. All right. So these are some of the considerations that we take into play as we're, you know, building the budget. We have a variety of information that influences, you know, this budget preparation process, the revenue sources that we're monitoring, both federal, state, local streams, cost factors such as CalPERS, STIRS obligations, increased healthcare or inflation. Certainly, we use a lot of internal forecasting information to kind of help inform the tentative budget, including, we also are looking at our enrollment data, because that drives the way that we're thinking about our budgets, the stock market performance, housing, all of those pieces do impact us. We use the apportionment calculators from the Chancellor's Office and of course, rely on multi-year apportionment projections that actually incorporate, so we've started to incorporate personnel costs and maintenance costs considerations, because we have a really robust construction program. And so as new buildings are getting built, especially if they are net new, student housing being a great example, there needs to be a really deliberate action related to an operational budget that we're planning for even in advance of a Fall '28 opening. All right. We're going to talk a little bit about our budget overview. Okay. So across all funds, so here's some of the budget assumptions and best practices. So our assumptions are, we understand and are prepared for any potential budget, we'll call them redirections, in response to any sort of state or federal budget impacts, and of course, any of the priorities that are identified by our College Planning Committee, the CPC. We have an FTS total target of $20,224, which will help us maintain our large college status. Currently, we have a planned .5 deficit factor budget into the tentative budget. That may be adjusted as we get into adopted, so we will continue to monitor that. If it needs to go lower, we will, based on any additional revenue that we expect. And then always, we are thinking of total cost of ownership related to any of the department planning or budgeting processes. Best practices that we always highlight under your direction, Board Policy 6200, which aligns with the Chancellor's Office recommended goal of a reserve amount of 16.67%, which is essentially two months of total general fund operating expenses, which is equal to no less than 67% of the general fund expenditures. All of these, with your direction, align with budgeting best practices as well that are published by the Government Finance Officers Association. All right. This is a quick sort of review related to the fund summary. So across all funds, the total projected budget dollars for '25, '26, it's approximately $1.94 billion. This includes $210 million in unrestricted general fund, $84 million in restricted general fund, and over $900 million now budgeted for Measure AC, and then another $500 million budgeted for Measure LB. So this represents clearly a significant growth in those budgets because of the passage of Measure AC. We are starting to plan those budgets. And then drilling a little bit more in depth into our core operating fund, total revenues are projected at $200 million, total expenditures are projected at $210 million with increases and planned operational activity. This results in a projected operating deficit of $9.6 million, which we are actively working on reducing between now and the adopted budget in September, with an ending fund balance that remains strong at over $60 million, preserving our fiscal health. All right. And then I like to always end on, you know, so we don't, we exist within a larger system as much as, for me, Long Beach City College is the center of the universe. There are other considerations that are happening at the state level that I just want to make sure that you are aware, that there are consistent conversations happening. So the system, there's a lot of advocacy requests, so there's a system request to make sure that we're always fully funding enrollment growth, which is about $68 million, which would be added to the larger budgets ongoing. And that's important for us, because we rock. We do a really good job at really working to increase our enrollment, and so we want to be paid for those pieces. And so while we are very appreciative of the increased enrollment growth funding for this fiscal year, it doesn't cover everything. And so there's always going to be state advocacy for that. Providing additional funding, there's a lot of advocacy for Financial Aid Office Administration with a request of $10 million ongoing. Modification, this is, this is interesting. Modification of the SCIF calculation to recognize the credit FTS at the higher of either the three-year average or the amount reported in the current year, which is, for the state would be $5.2 million. The key there is, when you're actually really working hard to increase your enrollment, you should be paid. It shouldn't have to take you three years to get those numbers up, and so there's a lot of advocacy there. Of course, I mentioned the inflationary adjustments for all categorical programs, I think is important. Advocacy for deferred maintenance funding. And then there's a host of advocacy requests that we continue to monitor on rising scholars, sustainability, financial aid, credit for prior learning, and part-time faculty health I think I would say, just in closing, I want to thank the board for your continued leadership and support of the college's financial resilience. The tentative budget before you all this evening is really a product of deliberate planning, prudent forecasting, and strategic alignment with both local and state priorities as well as the board's priorities. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, VP Jones, for that very detailed presentation on the budget. Is this PowerPoint, what's this, this format is a different, or is this, this is the new copilot?
This is actually Canva.
Canva. Okay, awesome. Very, very nice format. It's time for the board. We have 25 minutes of questions, five minutes per person. We'll go to Trustee Baxter, and then we'll go to Trustee Zia.
Hello. Very good report, excellent. I have, maybe you would consider this a dumb question, but we have money in reserves. Do we really have that money that we're investing? Or is it just on paper and is floating around somewhere in the open space?
So we really do have that money, and it's available to us. Is it invested in a way that would not allow us to get at it? No. It's available cash balance.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Zia.
First of all, thank you. I have to tell you, this is the first time I'm seeing someone take this densely academic budget vernacular. I mean, for me, I love it. It becomes ubiquitous after a while, and it's all about the shackles. It's very important to make it palatable for the general public, and I think you did a great job in a modular way, going through and tracking through, plowing through this thicket that we call budget. So thank you for simplifying it. And I think this is the first time you're presenting on it, so big mazel tov to you, and congratulations. I'm very impressed. I'm looking at page 12, and I do know, I'm seeing, maybe I'm missing it, but I think we're, our ending balance is about, is that an accurate characterization or understanding? So we're running lower than last year. I guess it's 12 of P D, so I think it's subsequent pages, it shows about 12. $9.56 million more, so our ending balance. So I'm just trying to better understand the reason why we have higher expenditures this year, and it doesn't have to be in an expository manner. If you can just let me know at a high level why that was and what was the driver. And that's, that's pretty much all I have. Again, congratulations. Great job, VP Jones.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So I'll start with the estimated actual column. Those are estimated because we're still closing our books. So as we're sort of getting all the invoices, so that fund balance there in the '24, '25 actually will change when I come back to you all at the adopted budget time. So note that that number's going to change. The tentative budget column, the deficit piece that's being, okay, so let me back up. Then the deficit piece in the '24, '25 actually was planned. I think you all did a really wonderful job at really thinking through some strategic priorities related to the dreamscape project and other sorts of things that then allowed us to designate these project lists that then allowed for that deficit in the '24, '25. Again, all projected. When we get into the tentative budget, '25, '26, those numbers will also consistently change as we receive a little bit more information from the Chancellor's Office related to revenue that's going to come. So we actually expect that $9 million deficit to come down and close when we come back to you in September. So one is planned activity for this fiscal year, based on those project priorities that were presented last August. And then the second is, we are working to close that gap. Did I, is that okay? Okay.
So it's not necessarily a deficit, it's just the estimated versus actual reconciliation?
Correct. So I will get you firm numbers in September related to '24, '25.
Thank you.
Trustee Maluulu.
Vice President Jones, you did a fantastic job for this to be your first budget presentation, especially because you had to use, you know, the whole new system. I enjoy Canva, am not as familiar to do presentations with it, so I got some good ideas. I have a question, but the slides aren't numbered. Are they numbered on your end?
If you just tell me which one, and then I'll spell today.
I wish I knew. It was maybe the third or fourth slide. If you go to the, there was, it kind, I think it may have looked like that, if you had another one that kind of had like little graphics on it. The only question that I wanted to know is if federal funding changes would impact any of that. I think you had a slide that had some...
Oh, the budget considerations?
Yeah.
These pieces, yes.
Yep. So in there, are those, are those budget considerations? What are we doing to prepare for any potential federal changes that are surely coming down the pike? Because we've already seen some of our federal programs be cut, and you've got forecasting data in there, but, you know, what are we doing? And I know that that's a very loaded question, and you don't, I understand you don't have a crystal ball on you today, but how can we be prepared for that?
So my crystal ball is out for repair.
Correct.
As soon as I get it back.
It's in the shop with mine.
Yeah. Here's what I would say. We are, given the state of the administration and the things and the changes that are happening, we have to be nimble and flexible. And so when I shared that we're working on strategies to try to close that deficit gap that we're currently projected in tentative, we are working to sort of identify funding sources that can be reused for things that might hit us in a way that we need to make a quick adjustment. And so as we are building the adopted budget, we are trying to be mindful of that, and then we'll share out those specific strategies at that point. But yes, it's, it's, it's going to be a dance between now and September.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, VP Jones. This was wonderful, and I liked the way it was presented, again, to help clarify what we are about to face. My question comes in similarly to Trustee Maluulu, is what are we looking at in terms of defer, look at differently with regard to deferred maintenance?
That's a good question. Thank you. So I'm going to take that from sort of a budget standpoint and then shift to like a prioritization standpoint, what we're hoping for. So budget standpoint, we are working to sort of proactively identify funds that we can kind of help assist with both the instructional equipment, no dollars, and the deferred maintenance dollars for next fiscal year, '25, '26. So we're trying to tag dollars for those pieces, so that we just don't have nothing in that fiscal year. Related to prioritization, we are actually going to be working with you all in the board retreat, just in terms of a lot of projects that are coming on, and would look to you all for some assistance in helping us prioritize some of the activity that we think would be important to continue, not only on the larger facilities' construction plan, but this capital deferred maintenance item. So coming soon, we'll see you at the end of next month. You're welcome. And I don't want to steal Jeff's thunder, he's somewhere over here, he's about to present to you next.
I have two questions, and we will stay in our time. I know we, there is debate in Sacramento about the 50% rule and amending it. I don't know if that's going to change or not, we still have the legislative session, it could become a two-year bill. But how are we doing in the current 50% rule from last year to this year?
We are, we are projected to make the 50, to comply with the 50% law. We are on target to comply.
Are we like 55%, 49.9%? Do we get down to that level of granularity?
We do. It'll be like 50.23%. Like, you'll get your number, but your number will happen in September. I've got to close the books, but we are projecting that we will make the 50% law.
Awesome. And that, and this is the tentative budget now, come back in three months after the final, I know there was some Sacramento budget agreement this, earlier this week, but still needs to be ratified, and they can make amendments in August, so come September, we'll know for sure, for sure there. But then also, the federal budget expires October 1st with the continuing resolution, but they're working on a new one, so that new budget could change, the federal budget could change what we're adopting tonight?
What we're adopting tonight, no. I think what could potential, well, let me think about this. So let me, let me explain it this way. The tentative budget just allows us to start paying our expenses July 1st. So it just allows us to load budgets for people so that we can continue to make our financial obligations. So once we presented it, you approve it tonight, it's, it's kind of closed the book, and we are really working to look at all of those items that you mentioned between now and September. Now, could it impact the September adopted budget? Absolutely.
Great. And last question on our reserves breakout, I didn't recall, did you put a percent of what the, our current policy, what the Chancellor's Office policy threshold and where we're at?
Correct.
Did that represent?
The current threshold is 16.67%. We are trending higher than that.
16.7 is the...
Is the base, is what we need to comply. Is the board policy, which is consistent.
Which is higher than the Chancellor's policy?
Yes. And it's also higher than Laco and, I mean, we do well to make sure that we're, we have enough reserve amount for any unforeseen circumstances.
So, our closeout reserve percent was what? And our new, our projected percentage is what from last year to next year?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't want to get up here and start telling you a story.
No worries.
Okay. But I can share that with our board secretary and have her share that back out.
Appreciate it. We always get a lot of questions on reserve percent and how it changes and shifts throughout the year.
Yes, I will get you those numbers.
Awesome. Yeah. We'll have better ideas come September. Excellent. Well, thank you for the presentation today. Next, we're gonna move to Jeff Connell. Give a round of applause. Next, we're going to 6.2. This is a five-year construction plan for 2027 to 2031 with our associate vice president, facilities and operations.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeff Connell, EVP, Capital Construction and Facilities. Nice to meet you all. Thank you, President Munoz, Board President Intug, members of the board for having me this evening. I have three things for you tonight, right? We have the adoption of the five-year construction plan, which facilitates our second item, which is the submittal of our interim project proposals where we seeks, you know, to get on the list for state funding for those projects. And then lastly, of course, to award the contract to our lowest qualified bidder for our Building E project, which we're very excited to get underway. So, with that, I am entirely old school and have been overshadowed in my presentation. This is gonna be straight up PowerPoint, ready to go. But with that, so we'll jump in with our first thing, right? Our first thing is the adoption of the five-year construction plan. And the timing of this is a little curious, right? Because here we are, next month, we're gonna do the board retreat. We're gonna engage all of you in an exercise to, to set the construction and the facilities' master plan priorities for the district. And we look forward to that opportunity. We've been working hard to develop criteria and some exercises we think will really help make that work. But in the meantime, I have a deadline for my interim project proposal submissions to the chancellor's office that I need to make. And so, as part of that, I need to have this five-year construction plan approved kind of before our more thorough conversation. The good news is that this plan is subject to change, right? This is, this is alignment with our facilities' master plan. This is kind of a subset of what are the projects that we actually see coming. And it is subject to change and they know that. And if it's any consolation, I'll be back again next year with two more projects because we do want to continue to try to always maximize state funding opportunities. So, with that, I'll jump in and we'll take a look at our five-year construction plan as it stands today. So, we're, we're all pretty familiar with, with much of what's green. These are the projects that we have going on now, right? The stadium, Building E, we're gonna talk about this evening, student housing, we, we got underway at our last meeting. And North Long Beach, student housing and multipurpose building as well. All, all underway and ongoing. Next, we look at blue, more of our upcoming within the next five-year window projects, the baseball stadium improvements. Building B is, is the building we heard earlier, already has a considerable amount of state funding. It is approved, it's on the list, and at this point, it's making the cut. The project we call Frontier Housing, right? Which is our opportunity to buy that easternmost part of the Frontier Building on the corner of Lou Davis and Clark and possibly turn that into student housing as our student housing corner. And so, we're excited about that. The Student Services Welcome Center at TTC is on the list and, and improvements to the quad, removal of that parking lot at TTC right in the middle that we barely use. All of these are good things that are on the, the construction plan, but also subject to some level of change in our priorities as we see fit. Then our buildings get, you know, our construction schedule gets a little bit more nebulous as we get farther out into the future. So, some of the things that are on the plan as it stands today that we'll be talking about more next month. The new library learning center, discussions about a new parking structure at the LAC campus. We're, we're having discussions with the school district here in Long Beach about the Butler Middle School site adjacent to our TTC campus and the, the exciting opportunity for a middle college kind of approach and to blend that property into the campus footprint. The horticulture complex at TTC, a small facility building. We're exciting to, you know, there's lots of planning for years out, looking at the new science and nursing building opportunity that might go where the current L building, where our current library is. These are all parts of the Student Service Building Welcome Center at LAC, renovating Building A, one of our more historic buildings, renovating Building K. And lastly, looking at a potential Carson overpass. So, these are all part of our five-year construction plan. And this helps facilitate this interim project proposal process that we need to go through. So, with that, I'll just kind of jump right in, right? And you have any questions, how all these dots connect, I'd be happy to answer them. But we're on the cusp of a deadline. We are limited to two. We, we get to submit two interim project proposals per year. And so, we looked at our construct, our five-year construction plan and we chose two that have a, you know, that meet the criteria first and foremost and align with our facilities' master plan. And I think, you know, there's no good time, but any time to remind you, we are not locked into these things. We are trying to get on a list and to cure state, to secure state funding. If we don't get it, or if we do get it, right? We still have decisions to make about how we want to spend our bond dollars. And, and so, this is more about creating opportunity for us than it is necessarily making a decision this evening about which projects go forward. So, a quick look at what the IPPs are, right? IPP lead to potentially FPPs, right? So, first you submit kind of your interim project proposal about what is it you want to do? How does it align with, you know, state and, and district priorities? How does it benefit students? How does it fit within your planning cycle? And you show the state this information and if it makes the cut and is selected, then you actually get to work, right? Because an FPP proposal is far more detailed and needs architectural drawings and renderings as well as an analysis of your space and all of those other things that are needed in order to secure state funding, right? So, at this point, we are proposing two different projects for IPPs this year. We wanted to make sure to mention, our projects meet our guiding principles in terms of our master plan considerations, in terms of academic need, the full campus concept, which I think the E building is really key and a great demonstration of, modernization and creating greater efficiency. You know, I just have to say, it's, 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 as, as a person who is responsible and promotes the, the built environment that creates the collaboration and the spaces available, it's really heartwarming to be able to see how much of a difference it can make in a student's experience here. And so, we continue to look for those opportunities where we can make that kind of difference and, and enhance the learning experience as well as the, the campus feel and environment. So, we looked at two things. The library is quite old, right? It's north of Carson. We, we call Building L. It just did go through and have the, the memorial dedication to Bobby Smith, which was a wonderful event. And we look forward to creating that event in a new library as well. So, to that, right, for full demolition and replacement, we are proposing an IPP be submitted to the state for a new library learning resource center. That would potentially be located on the current footprint of the, of Building Q. So, south of Carson. After the stadium is constructed, Q and R are going to, by plan, clear out. And so, that would be space we would have available for us. One of the things that helped us in terms of being able to make this proposal to the state was the seismic review. So, for, for many of our older buildings, they don't meet current seismic structural requirements. And our ability then to use the estimates of what it would cost to bring them up to code helps us make the argument with the state that by the numbers, it's more cost-effective to replace than it is to renovate. And so, with that, we were able to put together an IPP package for a new library that seeks matching state funds of about 35 million. The next one is Building A. In this one, we would just do a renovation. One, the building is historic and so demolition would be a major uphill battle. And so, what we looked at is when it was last renovated, some of it was done in 2013, but the building is awfully compartmentalized. And it is, in other, in other words, kind of cut up into a lot of small spaces. And what we would see is a way in which we would renovate that building for about $20 million and create much more functional spaces and also align it with Building E and the new student services that would go in there. And so, that we could kind of reprogram into Building A, library, other student support spaces, offices, things like that. And so, to that extent, we'll submit our second IPP for the Building A renovation. And then lastly, excitingly, right, Building E is here and underway. And so, this started, oh, just a few years ago, maybe in 2020, we started the planning cycle for how, you know, for, for a student services building on campus here at LAC. And what an amazing opportunity it was, right? This is a very exciting building, a lot of exciting spaces. And so, we are here tonight to award, this was a design bid build. This was the traditional, right? We designed it, we put it on the street, we got DSA approval. We have a low bidder who is fully qualified. And we're here to ask you to make that award this evening to Pro West Constructors. So, what, what is Building E? All of these different student services and support functions that we can bring together. It is an, it's an exciting, actually, kind of combination of our classic Spanish colonial architecture and the Spanish peanut color and the, and the style and feel of the campus, really brought into a very neat, modern age, right? So, a, a really nice blend of glass and open spaces with our classic clay tile roofs and our Spanish peanut color scheme. So, what, what we have next is to award the contract to the low bid. And what we hope for the summer is we have to do the environmental abatement work and then get the demolition underway. This project is ready to go. So, once we award, next thing we'll do is make sure everything's done and issue the notice to proceed and we'll go. I also like to thank everybody who's been involved and I couldn't possibly put them all on, right? But, but Lilane Fabi is our new bond planning manager. She's done an amazing job. She's fantastic. Brian Watt is a new member of the Cordoba Bond Management Team. He's gonna be our, our senior construction project leader for this. He'll do an amazing job. We say Team Claudia because really the, the entire purchasing team and contracts are just critical to getting all this done and the leadership of that group as well. And we just can't do anything around here without them. So, we thank them. HPI Architects did a great job. And of course, Cordoba and our bound, as our bond management team is always there for us as well. Specifically, you know, we go into these things kind of anticipating and hoping we're gonna have a great partnership with this company. Low bid projects can sometimes be slightly hairy, right? But I think that if we go in with the right attitude and we want to work things out together and we see ourselves in partnership to get this building done, we, we hope to make this as smooth a process as possible. So, with that, you know, I'm, I'm happy to recommend to you to approve Pro West Constructors as the qualified bidder for Building E and get that project underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Question we had. So, in the presentation, we do have another item in the agenda, both for the budget and for facilities' master plan that we'll vote on later in the agenda. So, this is background information for future voting items tonight. An opportunity to ask some additional detailed questions for folks, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Cool. And all right, this is opportunity for trustees to ask questions. We have up to 25 minutes, five minutes per trustee. We'll go to trustee Zia and then trustee Baxter.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to commend you, Jeff, for doing a great job. This is a lot of technical and technocratic details. So, I really think it was great. You kept it simple and it's illuminating how we're going about doing some of these imagining of the buildings and new reimagining of the buildings. So, I really appreciate that. And I just wanted to also thank you for presenting this great presentation and then also taking ownership. I think this is new for you as well. So, I wanted to welcome you and tell you how much I enjoyed it. And I've heard you're quite the salt of the earth and a stand-up guy and I'm really grateful you're working for us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Building E is of special interest to me because I lived there for a number of years. And are you eliminating the, with Beverly O'Neil never allowed you to call it the basement, but it was a basement.
Yes.
The low, the lower level, are you eliminating that?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Although.
That's okay with me.
Are you sure?
Positive. Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Always, they had all kinds of plumbing problems and mold, mildew, mold and mildew. And so, I, I'm glad to see that. So, that's good.
Yes. Trustee Maluulu.
Thank you for that great presentation. I would like to echo trustee Dr. Baxter's comments. One of the very first events I attended when I was teaching here was in that building. I took some of my journalism students there for an event that was happening that I asked them to cover as a class assignment. And it was the first time I had walked into that facility and I remember thinking like, whoa. Like, I, I couldn't believe that that was the space for students and gathering. It was, it was shocking. And then as time went on, you know, over time, I, I kept thinking like, well, we really need the fixes. And looking at some of your renderings, just fantastic. I cannot wait for that space. Our students will absolutely love it and I cannot wait to see that renovation. So, I'm very excited. Thank you for that presentation.
I have a couple of questions. I've, I've worked in government the last 15 years and there's always the question about lowest responsible bidder or lowest qualified bidder. Is that really the best value for the college? And I think in our, when we do our bond construction awards, we do the lowest qualified bidder?
We do.
Is, is there any other alternative method or bidding process that we have beyond that correct, that type?
Well, there are, right? And that's a, that's a larger question about contracting methods, as you know, and how we secure the services of, of some of our larger, you know? So, for example, in the stadium and student housing, they're doing progressive design build. And we've done traditional design build. This one was design bid build. We took more ownership over working directly with the architect in terms of designing the building. And then once we felt that the drawings were fully complete, approved by DSA, we took ownership over all of that process with our architect and then put the project on the street for bid. And, and you run a risk when you do this, as, as many of you know, right? Is that if your drawings are not tight, you open yourself up to challenges and additional costs and things that, that can make a project slow down or be more expensive than we'd hoped. But in this instance, right, we, we, it's a balance of the time available, cost controls and the type of project that you're doing. And so, without going too deep into it, because I, I do think this would be a great conversation for us to have together and to work through. This one went out with, as a, what we say, a pure low bid situation. So, if you are qualified and you're the lowest bidder, you're awarded the project.
That's great. Yeah. It'd be interesting for us to explore alternatives. The newest one I've seen is design, bid, build, operate and maintain a B-bomb or BD-bomb, which may or may not be applicable to us, but I know. which may or may not be applicable to us, but I know it's a new government strategy. Lastly, can you just summarize, we're in 2025, what projects are in the next calendar year between now and 2026? Is a Building E's coming? The LAC student housing, is there any other stadium? Are those the, the projects in the near term that will be happening on campus?
Yeah, as well as the off-campus North Long Beach building is one that we also hope to finalize design this year and get in. It kind of like when you say, I, I assume you're kind of asking about which ones are actually going to be construction going on.
I'm trying, I'm trying to plan my golden shovel picture calendar for next year.
Right. Because in the design phase would be things like the Welcome Center Student Services Building at TTC, right? That's one of our next top design priorities. And so as well as things like the, the Dreamscape Program and those kind of things are underway. So we'll have a ribbon cutting opportunities coming up before too long. And then also on the cusp then would be design work is going on or will begin shortly for the new baseball stadium work. So those are two examples of those are in design, so nothing too much too soon, but otherwise you identified kind of our four major construction projects.
Excellent. Oh, with that, everyone's asked questions. We appreciate your time tonight and presentation, and we'll be voting on the item later in the agenda.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you again, Jeff. Appreciate it. Give him a round of applause. First presentation. We don't do that every presentation, just the first time. All right, we're going to section seven, Board of Trustees Reports. This is where board members have five minutes to give a report, and we'll go through our, our five trustees. Trustee Zia, would you like to start tonight?
Sure, I have a litany of pictures, so please don't start the timing until Dario pulls it up. Dario, do you need some time? I don't know how to display. Okay, here we go. All right, so on May 22nd, I attended the raising of pride flag at LBCC TTC Campus and honoring Harvey Milk's legacy. Next picture. These are our fierce ladies partners with me. Next one, same. And then next one with Dr. Morton, Vice President Morton. And then we had on May 23rd, this is with the Personnel Commissioners and Carolyn, and of course, Dr. Baxter at the Classified Employees Appreciation Luncheon on May 23rd. And if we can go to the next one and forgive the bad teeth and the bad picture on my end, but this is a commencement with my partner in doing good, Dr. Baxter on June 5th. Next, look at that. Look at that beautiful array of sunshine and our students from all walks of life. What a happy, happy day. This is my why. This is why I continue to serve on this board. And yep, there is a bad teeth again, crashing the picture selfie, but it was just, it made me so proud. June 5th was just, it was also very special because it was my father's birthday, so it was extra, extra special. And one of the things that I loved was, this is Taylor Robertson, our student life superstar that I've known for years, and her daughter was graduating. What I really specially loved about this year's commencement was how students were allowed to bring their kids. So I want to commend staff or whoever made that decision. I thought that was so brilliant. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It was so special to see them be celebrated and bring their families, their kids, and I, I really, I want to see more of that. And then this is on Classified Appreciation Day, Kathy Knowles, I see you, Kathy Knowles, sorry Kathy. Next picture, and this is our very own Alicia Kirkwood. And we'll go to the next one, and then our Sonia De La Torre and Kathy, so special seeing you. And then next one, our Vice President Doctor, I think I just made you a doctor, didn't I? Yeah. Candace Jones, yeah. Your doctor in my book. And last but not least, I shared earlier, Shawminika Davis Harris, excuse me, our ASV president that was outgoing, that I'm staying in touch with the students. This is one of our own in 2017, Jennifer Hicks Morehouse. And they met, she was our valedictorian, I don't know if you remember, Dr. Correll, I think you were here. She was our valedictorian and that, she met her husband here, our pride and joy, and that is their beautiful baby Nicholas. And I'm happy to say she graduated with honor. She's one of our pride and joys and went on to Excel, and she owns her own business. And guess what was her major? Urban planning. And now she's doing so much more, and she's going to be hiring our students. Her husband, who also graduated from LBCC, is an electrical engineer and works for a top-notch Fortune 500 company based in downtown LA. They're so amazing and they come from a background that I'm happy that we serve. And Dr. Baxter and I have been working together and supporting them for years, and it's such a pleasure to be able to spotlight them. And on that note, I think that's the last one, right, Dario? On that note, I want to invite our students to send me stories, their stories. I want to hear from you, and I'm going to spotlight your stories. Tell me what LBCC, your experience has been, what I can do more, better, different to serve you, what you need, what we can all do to support and serve you as your public servants. I want to hear your stories. There's so much going on in the world and so much is focused on material things, and I want to be able to spotlight virtue and values and where kindness matters. So that's going to be my intent. I'm going to be focusing my board reports on you, the students, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to trustee Baxter next.
Fine, good. I've got events covered since the last board meeting. First of all, on May 15th, I'm on the Long Beach Memorial Hospital Board Philanthropy Committee. Also, we had a meeting at 7:30 in the morning, and then that same day, we had the Foundation Golf Tournament. And I had a great time playing golf, but I couldn't finish because I had somewhere else to be that evening. And then on the 17th, I attended a Cameo meeting, a member of Cameo. On the 18th, I was in the Pride Parade. On the 19th, I attended the AAUW book meeting. We have an author every year who, and the money that is raised is used to pay for scholarships. And then that night, I had an AAUW board meeting. Then on the 20th, it was a senior luncheon at which Frank and Jean Dyak were honored and also Julie Meehan. Frank, and I've known for probably 30 years, he worked at the high school, was a high school scholarship coordinator, and they've been married 65 years, and they were just darling and have contributed and continue to contribute all the time. Julie Meehan is the executive director of the Josephine Gunbinder Foundation, and they are closing up shop. And so it was wonderful for her to be acknowledged as a 30-year employee of the foundation. Then that night, we had the board workshop. And then on the 21st, I attended the Bobby Smith Library Dedication. Wonderful, wonderful community participation. I also went to a luncheon where I can't read my handwriting. Whatever I did, I did a luncheon on that day. On the 22nd, the Cottonwood Luncheon at Branch of Los Alamos. And then the honors banquet was that evening, the honors students were acknowledged. Then on the 23rd, I was at the Classified Staff Luncheon, study showed my beautiful picture. Then on the 28th, the Rotary Club of Long Beach went to Avalon for their meeting. Interesting, it was wonderful to go to see how long it takes to take the boat and get over there and then come back, and it was all day. But it was a wonderful meeting. The head of the Fire Department, the Fire Chief spoke, and he's an LBCC alum, and he asked me when we're going to get the Fire Academy, so I'm glad to see it's on the list. On May 29th, I had a Hall of Fame meeting. Then on June 3rd, I went, in Signal Hill, I went to the Ron Settles Breakfast, which Ron Settles, I remember when, obviously when I taught here years ago, he, he mysteriously died. He was arrested by the Signal Hill Police, then he died in, in jail. They said he committed suicide, but he probably didn't. But it was wonderful to see people in Signal Hill, which I usually don't go to things, and everything was very positive, and his family was there, and it worked out very, very well. Then on June 4th, the Rotary Scholarship Meeting and the regular Rotary Meeting. Then that night, I went to a First Lady's Talk by the Historical Society. And then on the 5th, of course, commencement, on the 7th, AAUW meeting. On the 12th, the Foundation Executive Committee Meeting. Then from June 14th to the 20th, I took Cameo seniors and the Long Beach City College graduate to Washington DC for a week. We had a wonderful time, it was a great experience, and I enjoyed going. I, I love Washington DC, except for the weather. It rained cats and dogs for two days, and I, I had to walk through the water and the puddles and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, and then on the 22nd, I went to a fundraiser for Deborah Peterson, who is an outstanding retiree from the Counseling Department. And she has set up a scholarship in memory of her aunt Hazel Bryant, and this was a fundraiser for the scholarship and was very well received and a lot of people there at, at the Wine Country on Sunday. And that, I can't believe it, I made it with 22 seconds. That's my report.
You need some water, you went too fast.
I know. And I didn't talk that fast.
Thank you. We'll next go to Vice President Morton for her report. We're going, we're going, we're working across. We're going to Vice President Morton.
He's got a method to his, to the, to the process. Okay, I was proud to celebrate the launch of Pride Month with attending the pride flag raising at the TTC Campus along with our, some of the colleagues here. That was an amazing event. I'm, I'm enjoying my firsts as I go through on the board, so that was a wonderful event. And of course, commencement season is my favorite time of the academic year. I was thrilled this year, and I had the joy of attending my very first LBCC commencement on June 5th. And it was truly an inspiring and heartwarming experience to see all of our graduates walking across the stage and seeing their proud families in the stands cheering them on. It was just a, as always, a powerful reminder of their perseverance, their achievements, and the bright futures that they have ahead. Congratulations again to the class of 2025. You really represent the best spirit and promise of LBCC, so I hope you're out there celebrating your achievements. On June 19th, we celebrated the Juneteenth, which is a time of reflection, education, and celebration of the African-American freedom and resilience. LBCC and the greater Long Beach community came together to honor our ancestors who fought for liberation and reaffirming our collective commitment to equity, inclusion, and justice. And these moments really are so important, especially in these times, and it provided us the opportunity to learn, engage, and celebrate the Black culture and reminded us all of the ongoing work that we have toward a more just and equitable society. I want to take this moment to congratulate all of the LBCC Juneteenth 1865 Award winners. That was an amazing, amazing event that we held, and it was well-attended. The award winners for this year were Anthony Bryson, who received the Empowerment Award, Angela Francois, who received the Courageous Leader Award, and David Brantley, who received the Student Award. It was really wonderful to see them standing there and their inspiration, inspiration, leadership, their dedication, and their contributions to our campus community. So congratulations again to them. And that concludes my report.
Vice, trustee Malulu?
Thank you, Board President Untuck. This is a great month, celebrating a lot of year-end festivities. Right after our last board meeting on Tuesday, May 20th, we did have a board workshop. I appreciate any opportunity for professional development, and I'm grateful for the three colleagues on the board who attended that event. It is important that we invest in ways to become better board members, so I appreciate everyone's time. Periodically, we do have to have events like that to show and demonstrate that we too support continuous learning. None of us are perfect, and we all ask so much of faculty and staff to attend professional development and training that it's our responsibility to do the same. On Wednesday, the 21st, I too was at the Bobby Smith Library Naming. Bobby Smith was not only my constituent, my friend, my supporter, but she was also my neighbor. We both lived a couple of blocks away from each other in the Wrigley neighborhood, and it was an honor to be a part of the naming of that library after her, such a fantastic human being. A few months ago, I shared a photo of Bobby Smith and I, and I cherish the time that I got to spend with her. On Thursday, the 22nd, I was at the Long Beach Blast Breakfast at the Yacht Club, and it was a great event because we did have some LBCC students that were there and that had gone through high school programs who would be attending LBCC in the fall. And then I went from there to Long Beach Memorial, and I was invited by LBCC nursing alumni to come and show support in their contract negotiations, and that was really neat to see some of our LBCC nursing alumni there. On Thursday, the 29th, I attended the Asian Pacific Islander Native American Caucus online. It's a caucus meeting that we have through ACCT in celebration of the month-long of heritage celebrations for that community. Friday, the 23rd, I was at the Personnel Commission Lunch. I had my son and my daughter with me, and we had a great time hanging out with everyone at the Classified Luncheon. It's always an event that we look forward to every year. On Wednesday, the 4th, we had an ACCT Board of Directors meeting, and we're planning our new academic agenda for the fall. Thursday, June 5th, fireworks commencement, such a fantastic event. I was thrilled with the turnout, not only of graduates but of attendees. And then on Friday, the 6th, I attended a Southwest Region Carpenter's Grand Opening of a Training Center in Compton, which many of our students will be benefactors of, so thank you for that. And we did have a lot of LBCC representatives there because of the workforce development partnership that we have. On Thursday, the 12th, and I do have a photo of this, I was at the TTC Campus participating in the mural that happened actually a few weeks ago when I was out of town, and that is the wonderful Alexi Steele, who is an artist. And I have lots of pictures that I take on my phone, but this is the only photograph that I'm going to share at this report. I was so impressed with Alexi's knowledge of Long Beach City College. You could tell that he's not just an artist, he's an artist with heart and passion, and he really wanted to encompass all of the great things that the community surrounding Long Beach City College brings to the table in the creation of this fantastic mural. I can't wait for the final product and unveiling of the mural. But several of us were not able to attend when we did the community event where people in the community can put their handprint on the mural. So I was very grateful that Alexi was able to accommodate me. And please read his bio if you can, Alexi Steele. He really only does things that benefit the community and togetherness. And congratulations for that project. I'm excited that it's on the TTC Campus, which I represent in my trustee area. On Friday, the 13th, I was at a Naleo event for, again, we're planning into our upcoming year. On June 18th, I was also at the Juneteenth and 1865 Awards. Congratulations for everyone who was honored. I loved the Community Award that was given in addition to the Campus Award, but the gentleman who won the Community Award, what a fantastic speaker he is, somebody needs to get him on a microphone. And then today, I was at the Student Parenting Hub Ribbon Cutting. Thank you for that fantastic experience. Thank you for what everyone is doing on campus. And congratulations to the class of 2025. And congratulations to the class of 2025 and enjoy your summer. See how I ended, right on time?
Time, alright.
Thank you.
And thank you Lauren for that great visualization. Helps us, keep us all on point. I'll go over my last, the last board report of the evening from the trustees. I want to take this time, an opportunity to recognize one of our colleagues and say thank you. We've had a change in leadership and AFT. And Robert Remetta has served as president, ooh, two or three terms? Three terms. And so we want to thank Robert for his service. You know, it's sometimes a thankless job, but we want to say thank you. We did get you some flowers to share, that, you know, take it home and put in your office? A plant, sorry, a plant? It looks like a flower to me. But we just want to take a moment to give this to you, recognize you. Thank you for your service. And if you don't mind taking a photo with us, we would love to do that. Give Robert a big round of applause. Thank you for your service. We're going to quickly adjourn and take a photo. Alright, we're moving on to our next agenda item 7.2. We have an executive summary of legislation and policy update. Attached is a report and it has recommendations the board trustees approve. All bills listed as recommended and supportive in the legislative executive summary memo. This is an action item, I need a motion and a second.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Morton, second by trustee Zia. There is a number of items on there. I'd like to ask Mr. Kemp to come up and if he could briefly summarize, what are new bills that we're voting on? And also, I don't know if there's a, I know it's late breaking on the budget, state budget this week. I don't know if we have any insight into that as well.
Alright. Good evening, Board President Untuck, trustees, and Superintendent Munoz, Superintendent President Munoz. Thank you for the opportunity to present this month's legislative and policy report. This report reflects the state and federal legislative activities that impact our college, our students, and the broader educational ecosystem. For the state, since our last report, there has been significant movement at the state level, particularly as we approach the final budget decisions in Sacramento. You got some of that information from VP Jones. Thank you VP Jones. As you may recall, the May revise came amid a multi-billion dollar budget shortfall, prompting lawmakers to carefully weigh priorities. In response, LBCC has remained active in advocacy, supporting legislation that protects immigrant students, expands dual enrollment, and invests in workforce development. Several bills were, that we've supported, have advanced, including AB 49 by Assemblymember Maratsucci, which deals with immigration enforcement protection on school campuses. AB 313 by Assemblymember Ortega, which deals with the extension of financial aid deadlines. AB 731 by Assemblymember Fong, which deals with the expansion of dual enrollment through college and career access pathways. And SB 638 Padilla, which deals with the coordination of career technical education and workforce grants. Additionally, AB 335, which seeks to establish the California Black Serving Institutions Grant Program, is now a two-year bill and we will continue to advocate for its success in 2026. It's a two-year bill. Numerous committee hearings have occurred in recent weeks, including the Senate and Assembly Appropriations Suspense File Hearings on May 23rd. These sessions held back a significant number of bills reflecting the cautious fiscal posture of the legislature. The Assembly and Senate Budget Committees met on June 11th to advance the legislature's version of the 2025-2026 Budget Act. The Assembly proposed a $232 billion general fund budget with 9.5 billion in the budget balancing actions and an increased reserve. Education funding, particularly for K through 14, remains a top priority with new investments in transitional kindergarten, or TK, college infrastructure, and basic needs, despite the lean budget year. So all of that's really good for us. And on the federal legislative side, two major developments warrant our attention. HR 1, also known as the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, or Abba Ba 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 Uh, passed the US House of Representatives. This sweeping legislation includes troubling provisions that impact higher education, including reducing federal student loan availability and consolidating repayment plans, restricting Pell Grant eligibility to students enrolled in 8+ credits up from 6+ credits, introducing a new workforce Pell Grant for short-term, high-demand programs starting in July 2026. This bill now moves to the Senate, where changes are expected before the July 4th deadline, which is next week, and the presidential budget request and departmental cuts. The updated FY 26 budget request proposes a 15% cut in the Department of Education, elimination of key student support programs, including Trio, which includes upward bound, a $1,700 reduction to the maximum Pell Grant award, and an 80% reduction in federal work-study support, as well as the Secretary of Education Lyndon McMahon testifying in favor of those reductions, which signals the fundamental shift in federal priorities away from traditional post-secondary education and support. Meanwhile, the Department of State has paused new student visa interviews in anticipation of revising screening guidelines. This may delay the arrival of some international students this fall and it's a critical issue we're monitoring as we look at enrollment and diversity on our campus. Finally, on a more positive note, the Department of Education released its FY 25 Perkins Act allocations with California set to receive nearly $143 million. This continues to provide vital support for career and technical education programs across the state. And we're proud that LBCC continues to expand its offerings in high-wage, high-skill areas supported by these funds. In these turbulent times, it's clear that our collective advocacy matters more than ever and LBCC continues to show up, testifying, writing letters, and standing firm in our values for equity access and student success. I want to thank you all for your leadership and support for our advocacy efforts.
Thank you. Trustees, any commentary, questions, discussion? I would just like to say to our student trustee to please take note of the serious attacks on students that are coming at the federal level. The change to full-time unit load from 12 to 15 could significantly impact our budget and change students', you know, experience here on campus. We did talk about this several months ago. The administration first started proposing some of these changes, that it could dramatically change what we have to offer. It could reduce the number of people that we can employ to offer classes. It can change the support programs, like the Trio program, that we just heard today, our grant is being terminated. And so, you know, we don't have many students here today and it's summertime. But please take note of what's happening, that the biggest impact of these changes is going to be to our students. And it's a very, very unfortunate situation and avoidable. And with that, oh, on the state budget deal that happened this week, was anything different than what was in the Prop 98%? Or, and I think, I mean, it was only like two days ago, I saw a news release. But also, our proposal for a student housing grant for LIC. Any movement or is that totally gone?
It's still in play. You know, we're going to be, you know, we have some opportunities to do some advocacy over the summer before the conclusion of the session. So it's not completely out of play. It wasn't included in the budget, but it's not dead yet. And I can give you a full update on, you know, what happened two days ago and have that distributed through the secretary.
Great, thank you. Alright, without, we have one last question, trustee Zia.
Just wanted to thank you Carl. I think you've upped your presentation. I like that you're presenting and not our consultants or government affairs. I really appreciate that and I appreciate how you articulated the different bills and the seminal points. So I wanted to commend you. Good job.
Thanks trustee Zia.
Alright, with that, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion to adopt the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Trustee Malu, was that an extension or no, I couldn't hear you?
Voting on the policy?
Yeah, okay. It's unanimous, the recommendations are adopted. Thank you. Moving now to 7.3. This is a reappointment of our Citizens Oversight Committee member. This is an action item and it's stipulated by our Citizen Oversight Bylaws and the board trustees discretion. The Citizens Oversight Committee members may be reappointed to serve up to three consecutive terms. The members referenced below have agreed to continue their service on the Citizens Oversight Committee. The members in terms of office are as follows. One person, Christopher Melasa, from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2027, for a second term. He's a representative supporting organizations for colleges. He's Area 5. Attached is a copy of his biography. Do want to note for folks, we typically have board docs. It's been our online portal. We have a new portal called Divergent. It's still linked off our website and it has, any of the attachments that we referenced tonight is on a new interface, just in case. And it does look a little different on the screen in the room tonight. But this is an action item, I need a motion and a second to adopt on the appointment.
So moved.
I got a motion by trustee Malu, the second by trustee Zia. It was a tie. Any discussion on this appointment? Seeing, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Eyes have it and he's appointed. Moving to 7.4, this is revised board policy, Chapter 2, board trustees, board policy 2310. This is a second reading. In accordance with our established practice, the following board policies have been distributed, discussed, and approved by the President's Leadership Council. The changes are being recommended as a result of ongoing review to ensure compliance with California Education Code Title V, accreditation, current practices, and other external compliance or agency expectations. So this is also an action item that will need a motion and a second to adopt.
Second.
Moved by trustee Malu, the second by trustee Baxter. The recommendation is the board trustees approve and adopt the revised board policy, Chapter 2. Board trustees, board policy 3210 as submitted. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Seeing, hearing none, take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Eyes have it. The policy's been adopted. Moving to 7.5, this is a first reading. It's an informational item on several policies. This is under the Chapter 3 General Institution Policies, 3500, 3550, 3570. We also have the attached administrative policies that are there for informational purposes, but to share. It's also on the agenda and on our screen tonight. It relates to campus safety, weapons on campus, no smoking and tobacco, free environment on campus are the three. Any discussion or questions on the three policies that are for first reading? Seeing, hearing none, we'll go to our next item, 7.4, which is an action item. This is revised board policy, Chapter 3 Institutional, General Institution, board policies 3300 and 3501. This is a second reading. These have to do with our public records, campus security access. It's recommended that the board trustees approve and adopt the revised board policies as submitted. I'll need a motion, a second to advance.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Any discussion on this second reading of the public records and campus security access policy? Seeing, hearing none, we'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it? Oops, sorry, any extensions? Eyes have it and it's, the policy is adopted. Moving to the consent calendar, or consent agenda. This is an opportunity that anyone can pull an item from the consent agenda for consideration. This is where we take one vote on several items for an efficiency purpose. Is there any items that folks would like to pull?
Yes.
Dr. Morton?
I'd like to remove item 8.2, please.
8.2. Any other items from any other trustees? Seeing, hearing none, we're going to move to the consent agenda, which covers, it's a little bit different here, items 8.1 through... 8.19. So 8.1 through 8.19, excluding 8.1 is the consent, sorry, 8.2. So 8.1 to 8.19, excluding 8.2, is our consent agenda action item that I'll need a motion and a second to advance.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia.
Second.
Second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on the consent agenda items?
I just had a question. There's some of these items that are marked based on the Levine Act, just for the benefit of the public. What is the valence of that reference for some and not others? It says California, like for example, for 8.5, but it's not for all of them. California Levine Act Disclosure Item, Government Code Section 84308.
Sure, I'll ask Board Counsel Ewing if you would come to the podium to explain the legal purpose. And we've been doing this for almost a year, I think, on different items that are relevant. But Board Counsel Ewing?
Certainly, thank you, President Untuck, trustee Zia, and for the members of the public who are listening to this. The Levine Act essentially is asking public officials who are elected, who sit on public bodies, to disclose any amounts that they receive by way of donation from persons who have items that are going to come before the board of trustees or that elected body for a vote. So vote is considered influence. And so the idea is to essentially to ferret out those items, I think it's 12, maybe 14 months in advance, that come before the body for action. So the obligation of the elected officials is to look at items that are on the agenda to ensure that they don't have any sort of conflicts of interest or ethical responsibilities that they need to abide by with respect to donations from persons who have business before the board.
Okay, I guess I was asking about some of them, because all of these are expenditures and have monetary touchpoints or requests for recommendation. So doesn't that apply to all the items? Only some of them are marked, that's why I'm asking.
I don't know, I don't see what you're seeing. So it's hard to, you know, it's hard to understand exactly what you're referring to. But generally speaking, if there's a Levine Act notation, the idea would be that the entity that's coming before the board for business, for the board to take action on, might be someone that a board member received a donation from. And so the idea would be, so let's say it's XYZ company. And XYZ company has an item that comes before the board. If a trustee received a donation from XYZ... If, if a trustee received the donation from XYZ company and it's a certain, certain dollar amount, then the trustee has the duty to disclose that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
And I'd like to point back, we did have a presentation to the board that we had in January on training on the Levine Act and what it qualifies and doesn't qualify for. So it, we do go through with Board Counsel Ewing and Michelle. We're drafting the agenda to itemize relevant areas, because not all areas are relevant to, to the law. I mean, it's Government Code Section.
84308.
Yep. Is, is the actual Government Code area. But, you know, for a short term, it's, I mean, people just call it the Levine Act, because that was the legislative author who originally did the law. All right. Without any other questions on the consent agenda, we'll take a voice vote, except for item 8.2. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The eyes have it and the consent agenda is approved. Moving to 8.2, this is a purchase order ratification. This report reflects activity from April 19th, 2025 through May 30th, 2025, for a total of 4.1 or 4, 4,160,570 and 5 cents. The total can be found on page 218 of the attached report. But it's recommended that the board of trustees ratify the purchase order and change order issuances for the period of April 19th, 2025 through May 30th, 2025, in the amount of 4,160,570 and 5 cents. And this is an action item that I'll need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by, well, before, oh. Before we, before we take the motion second, Dr. Morton?
Yes, colleagues, I will recuse myself from voting on this item, 8.2, involving the purchase order ratifications. I have a conflict of interest due to a campaign contribution from the Cordoba Corporation within the last 12 months, specifically in August 2024. So in accordance with California Government Code Section 84308, I will abstain from any discussion or vote on this matter to uphold the integrity of the board.
Thank you. So we have a motion and we need a second to move forward on this? There's been a motion already by trustee Zia. We need a second. Seconded by trustee Malulu. Any discussion on the purchase order ratification? Seeing, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. The purchase order ratification is adopted by the majority of the board. And we'll move forward to now, item 8.2. So, sorry, not, there is no 8.2. We're going to Section 9, 9.1. So 8.19 was the last section of the consent agenda. This is a human resources area. And this is, 9.1 is about indefinite salary rates for district employees. The purpose of this declaration is to permit the district the flexibility to provide retroactive compensation increases without violating the California Constitution. The California Constitution, Article 11, Section 10, precludes a public employer from adjusting the compensation employee after service has been rendered unless the governing board takes appropriate action prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1st, 2025. The district will otherwise not have the legal right to make any changes, including increases or decreases retroactively to the beginning of the fiscal year to take an action. First, the recommendation action is, is recommended that we anticipate any potential financial uncertainties, negotiations, legislation, or other factors that the governing board hereby declares that all salary rates be declared indefinite for the fiscal year of 2025 for academic employees represented by LBCCFA, our Full-Time Association, and CHI, our Part-Time Faculty Association, classified employees represented by American Federation of Teachers, AFT, management team employees, and any other unrepresented employees as submitted. So we'll need a motion and a second to.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia.
Second.
Second by trustee Baxter. Any discussion on the 9.1, on this declaration? Seeing, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and the declaration is approved. Moving to 9.2, these are employment contracts. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 9, uh, employment contracts. I believe we have one new hire. And I'm gonna read through this and then we'll need to take an action item, a, a motion and a second to, to adopt these employment contracts. The following employment contracts provide employees with the term of employment and salary with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. So first, Barry Barnes, Director of Basketball Operations, head men's coach for a term of July 2025 to June of 2027. Salary 136,515 per year, attached is the contract. Next is Marcus Carroll, Director of Operations, Head Coach, Track and Field and Cross Country, for a term of July 2025 through June 2027 with a salary of 144,869 dollars per year. Next is Oscar Lee Douglas, Vice President of Academic Affairs, for a term of July 2025 through June 2027, with a salary of 302,237 per year. Next is Vanessa Garcia, Director of Psychological Services, for a term of June, July 2025 to June 2027, a salary of 178,159 per year. And next is Joanna Hernandez, Assistant Director of EOPS/Care and CalWorks, for a term of July 2025 through June of 2027, with a salary of 133,207 per year. And also denote, denote that Joanna is a new hire to this position, a new employee. Attached is her bio for reference with the contract. Next, Alicia Kirkwood, Associate Vice President, TTC, for a term of July 1st, 2025 to June 2027, a salary of 244,698 per year. Next is Lloyd Nashua, Vice President of Humans, Human Resources, for a term of July 2025 to June 2027, for a salary of 302,237 annually. Next is Elisa, sorry, Elizabeth Orr, Dean of Social Services and Arts. Term is July 2025 through June 2027, a salary of 222,962 dollars per year, pending a board approval of ratification. That's a contingency clause there. It's in the contract. And next, and lastly, we have Guadalupe Pascias, Director of High School Outreach and Educational Partnerships, for a term of July 2025 to June of 2027, a salary of 146,267 dollars per year. It's recommended that the board of trustees approve these employment contracts as submitted. I need a motion and a second to advance.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Morton and second by trustee Malulu. Any discussion on the employment contracts? Trustee Zia?
I just want to congratulate everyone. It's well deserved. And I know we're gonna vote in a bit, a bit, but I also want to welcome our new hires who are non-incumbents on the list.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion on the item? Seeing, hearing none. Dr. Munoz, we can do a voice vote on this, right? We don't need to do a roll call? Okay, we'll do, we'll do a roll call vote. Secretary Zale, go through each of the trustees?
Yes. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Annette Morton?
Aye.
Vivian Malalulu?
Aye.
Uduak Jo Untuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
All right. The employment contracts are adopted by the board. Moving to item 9.3, this is a first reading of a new and revised board policies. This is Chapter 3, General Institutional Board Policies, 3050, 3410, 3420, 3435, and 3440. Attached is the administrative policies that go with each of them. This is related to institutional code of ethics, nondiscrimination. There's a lot, a lot here. Equal employment opportunity, discrimination, harassment complaints and investigations, service animals, commitment to diversity, delegation of authority for human resources, verification of eligibility for employment, collective bargaining, employee evaluations, academic employees, classified employees, confidential employees, classified supervisors and managers, fingerprinting, industrial accidents and illness leave, retiree health benefits for academic employees. And this is an informational item that we can all read, digest, and we'll come back to the board for a final ratification. Any questions or comments on these policies as presented? Seeing, hearing none, we're gonna go to 9.4, reclassification and compensation for academic positions. This is an action item that we'll need to take a vote on, but I'll have to read the, the entry here first. It's approve an increase of one range of the management salary schedule for all academic deans, range 15 to 16. Reclassification of dean institutional effectiveness to associate vice president institutional effectiveness. An increase of two ranges on the management salary schedule from range 15 to range 17. Reclassify the director of athletics to associate dean athletics. Title change only, no fiscal impact, no changes of current duties. The scope of these duties and responsibilities of the dean classification group and the position of dean institutional effectiveness has expanded significantly over time. Accordingly, superintendent president recommends changes noted above effective July 1st, 2025. There is attachments of the positions. And it's recommend the board trustees approve the reclassification and compensation for the academic positions as submitted. This is an action item I'll need a motion and a second for.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia.
Second.
Second by Dr. Morton. Any discussion on the items? Dr. Munoz, I know this is a follow-up to the, I think, classic comp study and the budget this year. Anything you want to say? This is not, this is one of several that are gonna come to the board, right?
Yes, so I think the distinction I would draw out that this will address the reclassification and compensation study for the management team as it relates to academic positions. We will still be advancing the classified positions, but as they are under the PC rules, there's a whole process for that, so those will be coming at a future date once we go through the PC rules process.
Great, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing, hearing none, we already have a motion and a second on the floor. This time, we'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and the reclassification is adopted. Moving to Section 10, this is Academic Senate. We have 10.1 is the Advanced Placement Equivalency Chart. This is an action item. It's to facilitate credit for prior learning for AP exam equivalency. It serves as updated resources for faculty, counselors, and students. There's some additional description here. There's an attachment with the chart. It's recommend the board trustees approve the AP equivalency chart effective Fall 2025 as submitted. This is an action item. I'll need a motion and a second to advance.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia.
Second.
Second by Dr. Baxter. Any discussion on the equivalency chart? Can I ask, maybe, Dr. Hunt? So for AP exams, are, do we, how many units are we gonna apply or grant? Is that what this chart is effectively doing?
I'm gonna, if it's okay, I would like to defer to our curriculum chair, Colin Williams, who's here. He can answer that for us.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Board President, Vice President, Board of Trustees, and the community. My name is Colin Williams. I'm a faculty librarian, so I love seeing all of the library achievements. And I am the curriculum committee chair here. So to answer your question, yes. This is a form of credit for prior learning. The chancellor's office gives guidance. And so what we're able to do is provide course-specific equivalencies for specific AP exams in addition to units that are awarded in GE areas and also units that are awarded in alignment with CSU and UC guidance.
And just a question, I, I have a recent high school graduate. Do you have to get a 3 or higher to get credit? Or does a 1 or 2 score still give you some partial credit?
Correct. 3 is the minimum. And so disciplined faculty might have the ability to look at that 3 and should it be higher for more units of the AP credit? But I believe 3 is the minimum.
Is there, I'm sorry, last question.
You're good.
Is there, is there a residency requirement to be able to grant this prior credit learning? So could somebody say, hey, let me send you my transcript for all my AP classes? Say, okay, we're giving you 16 units. Maybe that qualifies for a certificate. Or maybe they say, hey, Long Beach City College, I have 16 units 4.0, when they're applying to Long Beach State, but they never come here.
Right. You ask good questions. Somewhere, I believe residency and credit for prior learning do intersect, whether that's in regulation or in our local procedure. I would have to look into that.
And it's totally a hypothetical situation that I just came up with right now, so totally understand. Okay, okay. Dr. Munoz said residency comes into place when you're granting awards. So a certificate or an associate's degree. All right, awesome. I think this is very positive and folks in the community and parents, I think will be very happy to see us doing this. So thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions on the AP equivalency chart? This is an action item. We have motion second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and the chart is adopted. Moving to 10.2, this is new modified inactive courses and distance learning addenda. This is an action item, includes an inventory of new courses, modified courses. So I'll read through them briefly here. New courses are Introduction to Mental Health Services, AI and Machine Learning Foundations. There's Honors History African Americans from, to 1877. Honors History African Americans from 1877. Modified courses include Introduction, Library Science Course, Introduction to Information, Introduction to Academic Research, Introduction to Advanced Academic Research, Data Analytics with Power BI, Work Experience, Microsoft Windows Server, Information Security Fundamentals, Sanitation Safety Equipment, Menu Planning and Food Purchasing, Employment Skills and Self-Concept, Sports Officiating, I might take that one, American Sign Language 1, 2, 3, and 4, Engineering, Introduction to Engineering, and Introduction to Environmental Science. The distant learning courses are Introduction to Mental Health Services, AI and Machine Learning Foundations, and Introduction to Statistics for Business. And we are making inactive a different sports officiating class in spring of this coming year. This is an action item. We'll need a, a board motion to advance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by Dr. Baxter. Any discussion on these new modified or inactive courses? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and the courses are adopted. 13, 10.3 is also an action item. This is new modified inactive programs of study, different from courses. There are two actions and two new programs. The inventory of new programs includes Mental Health Studies, a Certificate of Accomplishment, and AI Literacy Certificate of Completion. There is an attached PDF with additional information. This is an action item. I'll need a motion and a second to advance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Any discussion on the programs? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and the programs are adopted. Moving to Section 11, this is Academic Affairs. This is a first reading, 11.1, on Chapter 4, Academic Affairs, Board Policy 4030, 4035, 4910. Attached are the administrative procedures for informational purposes only. This will come back to the board for a second vote and ratification. This has to do with academic freedom, academic honesty, generative AI intelligence in academics. Are the four. And there's an attachment of each on our Divergent document webpage that folks can look at. So there's no actions required. This is information only. Moving to 11.2, this is an action item. It's Revised Board Policy Administrative Procedures for Chapter 4, Academic Affairs, Board Policy 4026. Administrative Procedures 4026. So this has to do with psychology and criteria for international education. And it's recommend the board trustees approve and adopt the revised board policy, Chapter 4, Academic Affairs, Board Policy 4026. I'll need a motion and a second to advance.
So, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Baxter, seconded by Dr. Morton. Any discussion on the item? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Eyes have it and it is adopted. Moving to Section 12, Administrative Business Services. Dun, 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 the budget, 12.1, this is tentative budget for 2025, 2026. This is an action item and a follow-up to the presentation we had earlier in the evening from Vice President Jones. It's attached are the longer budget book and the... and the longer presentation with additional information for folks' reference. So I'll need a motion in a second to advance tentative budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Baxter, second by trustee Zia. Any discussion on the budget before we take a vote? I'm going to call for a roll call vote on this. Secretary Zia?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Annette Morton.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. She's absent. Uduwak Joe Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Student trustee Leia Taowa.
Aye.
All right, the budget is adopted. Moving to item twelve point two, this is the five year construction plan for twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty three, I'm sorry, twenty thirty one. It's getting to be a long night. I have to read this here for a moment. The five year construction plan is an annual document required by the state chancellor's office for projects that district expects to pursue currently and over the state's budget window of twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty one. The purpose of the FYCP, the five year construction plan, is to show the state, the district's use of facilities compared to students' demand and determine the fund's worthiness. The FYCP does not obligate the district to a financial or contractual manner. A total of twenty one capital construction projects have been identified for fiscal year FYCP, which are consistent with our twenty twenty four facilities master plan update. The FYCP includes initial project proposals, IPPs, for library LRC replacement and building a renovation. Approved for the FYCP is being requested, approval for FYCP is being requested to meet the state's July first, twenty twenty five deadline. There's three attachments there and this is a follow up to the presentation we had earlier this evening. It's an action item, I'll need a motion in a second to advance.
Second.
Move by Dr. Morton, second by Dr. Baxter to adopt this. Any questions on the construction plan? Seeing, hearing, none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Secretary Zia?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. Absent. Annette Morton.
Aye.
Uduwak Joe Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Student trustee Leia Taowa.
Aye.
All right, thank you, the construction plan has been adopted. Moving to item twelve point three. This is a first reading informational item. It's revised board policy, chapter seven, administrative business services, board policy seventy four hundred. This has to do with employee travel. There's attachment to the divergent webpage that folks can see if they'd like to read more. But this does not require any action tonight. Any questions on the employee travel policy? Seeing, hearing, none, we'll move on to twelve point four. This is an action item, community and student workforce project agreement. This is an update to our contract with LA Orange County Building Trades and Construction Trade Council and the Mountain West Carpenters Union. This is an amendment to add two projects, North Long Beach Housing Project and the Liberal Arts Campus Student Housing Project to the list of projects that would be under our CSWPA effective May first, twenty twenty six, through June thirtieth, twenty forty one, or until all identified projects are complete or is funded through general obligation bonds. There is some background information and attachment, but it's recommend the board trustees authorize the vice president business services or designated to enter into and execute the contract as amended, contract amendment as submitted. Although I'll need a motion in a second to advance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by Dr. Baxter. Any discussion on the item? Seeing, hearing, none, we'll take a roll call vote. Secretary Zia?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu. Annette Morton.
Aye.
Uduwak Joe Intuck.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Student trustee Leia Taowa.
Aye.
All right, the amendment has been adopted. Moving to section thirteen, student services. Thirteen point one is a new and revised board policy administrative procedure, chapter five, student services, board policy fifty five hundred and fifty five ten. This is a second reading and an action item. This has to do with standards of student conduct and off campus student organizations. It's recommend the board trustees approve and adopt the revised board policies fifty, fifty, fifty five and fifty five ten as submitted for a second reading. I'll need a motion in a second to advance these policies.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by Dr. Morton. Any discussion on the policies that are presented for the second reading? Seeing, hearing, none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it and the policies are adopted. Moving to section fourteen, this is board committee reports. I don't recall we had any board committee meetings. I think there's an audit committee meeting as the next one coming up. Okay, but it did not happen yet, so we can't report on it. All right, fifteen, bargaining union reports. Fifteen point one is LBCCFA bargaining report from the president Suzanne Engelhardt for five minutes. Suzanne, are you here? All right, not seeing her, we'll move next to our AFT bargaining president report with Robert Remetta for five minutes. Robert's here, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Intuck, Superintendent Nunez, esteemed board members, members of the community. It's been a fun six years, as you guessed. This is my last time as president. Mark Smith will be replacing as the AFT president next week, July first. So he's at a conference right now, otherwise he would have been here. The six years have been interesting. You know, I did three terms. We survived some pretty crazy times. You know, COVID came in that little detail and that just threw us all for a wrench. But overall, I have to admit, the people in the dais that were here and the ones that have come and gone did an amazing job with the college. You know, we're facing some difficult times. Classified, as I always speak for, suffer a lot when times get rough. So when those times are coming and people need to, you know, buckle down and we're working hard to make sure the school's successful, students are successful. But with rising costs in California, it's really difficult for our people. You know, we take it real tight. You know, people survive paycheck to paycheck and with families, it's tough today. In the long term, since you'll probably be here a lot longer than me, you want to hire people from Long Beach. Pages are going to have to adjust eventually. Long Beach is becoming quite the little city and it's quite expensive. I mean, if you want to consider like people are going to commute to work here, yeah, I guess. It's not what we've always, you know, the, we've always followed the point of we're community, students here, faculty, staff. We live here, we grow here, many people try. It's just becoming harder and harder. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not telling you anything new. Y'all knew this, you know, it's just going to get rougher in the future. I just want you to take the next several years that are going to be tough before it'll get better to really plan out what you do, you know. I know you can't do a lot in a lot of areas, but you can be tactful on how we handle certain classified related things that'll probably come up. I'm dumping a lot on Mark and I, reason I stepped down to VP is to make sure he's up and running before things really go, you know, could go bad. And I want to make sure the classified are supported through this time. We have built a lot, me being here, it's not just me, but the people behind me. This college is, in my opinion, with your leadership and the, and the, and the classified and the other community members have really made this place shine. We've, we've stepped it up. That new E building should be amazing. And there's no argument that we all wondered when that chandelier was going to fall in the old E building. It was like, oh, my God. So, I mean, those of us that don't know what that is is they had like a five thousand pound chandelier up there for decades and it was like, okay, let's get rid of this. But, you know, times are changing and that's, that's what this is about. You've made modifications, you've made plans, your, your outcomes for the future for us, the college, the students, the staff, faculty, we all are a big team, all falling behind what you guys do. The coming months is going to be like the most important time for this, this body right here. You're going to make the most difficult decisions and I really wish you the best of luck. Your guidance in the past has been great. We plan for the future, we need to continue to plan for the future. And I really wish the best for all of you and the decisions you make. So thank you so much for the last six years.
Thank you, moving to item fifteen point three, the bargaining president report with Crystal Huckabee for five minutes. Crystal, are you here? Not seeing her, we'll move on to our next section sixteen, public comment on non-agenda items. I do have, I believe, two cards, three cards, four cards. I'll read them off and I don't know if everyone's still here. I have Ant on student wellness, calling Ant to the public comment, A-N-T. Seeing, hearing, no one, we'll move to next. We have Al on student wellness, Al? I think it's a different Al. It's a different, it's a different Al. There were students here earlier. Al on student wellness does not appear to be here. We have Lee, Lee Epstein on two, two point six, submitted late.
Yeah, sorry, getting out of work was a little.
Welcome, three minutes to speak. And there's a timer may come up on the screen for you, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, thank you, grateful for you giving me time to, sorry, grateful for you to give me time to roll back like fourteen pages in the agenda. So, Lee Rice Epstein. And I am a parent of two now high school students. So I think you mentioned you had a high school graduate, congratulations. My youngest just completed middle school, is going into high school in the fall. We've spent the last four or five years, a lot of that, on this campus. We're very proud of the time we've spent on this campus, very proud of the opportunities that my children have had to be able to experience something of college life even while they are in their early teens, right? I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I think they have developed a great appreciation for everything that is done here on behalf of the students. However, it's like not all glowing, right? So one of the things in particular that I, that the reason I wanted to speak on two point six tonight is has to do with the vision statement. Spreading innovation in support of anti-racism and inclusion to ensure programs and services inspire and prepare learners to thrive as citizens in a diverse democracy and achieve their intellectual, financial, and personal goals, cultivating a community that fully embraces individuals from, I don't want to stress all backgrounds because I think that's the key here, cultures, races, identities, life experiences, perspectives, beliefs, abilities, and values. I mentioned that I have a, well, he's now fourteen, just completed middle school last summer. He did take part in the, in the dual enrollment program, which I think is an excellent program for all LBUSD students. However, this summer he decided not to. And the reason he decided not to is that he was originally going to take some world history programming, but the pervasive anti-Jewish attitude that is, he's seen and experienced in and around this community ultimately made him feel like he, as a fourteen year old, and would not be welcome in a class discussing world history. And I think that merits my appearance tonight. He decided last week he wasn't going to be in the class and that does mean that he's going to also tell other students that that's kind of his experience here. And I think if this college is really going to represent the Long Beach that I live in and that hopefully all of you live in, it really will represent all people, you know, regardless of their background, culture, race, identity, and life experience. So, thank you, and we'll certainly be back. Possibly he'll want to speak to you as well.
Thank you, Lee, and we can't respond in public comment, but we do have our vice president student services, Noel Corral here, who can talk to you about dual enrollments, dual services. Next, our last speaker is Al on antisemitism on campus.
Good evening, board members. I'm not just a Zionist, I'm a proud Zionist because I believe that the Jews have a right to live in their homeland, the land of Israel, or as it is known in the Bible, the land of Zion. At the last board meeting, board president Intuck made a distinction between real antisemitism and bogus antisemitism. I'd like to follow up on that because while the filthy and disgusting antisemites on their extreme far right are open about their antisemitism, the filthy and disgusting antisemites on extreme far left obfuscate their antisemitism. Who can forget how eight years ago in Charlottesville, the filthy and disgusting right wing antisemites yelled, Jews will not replace us. On the flip side, the filthy and disgusting antisemites on the extreme far left gaslight us with a slogan, we are not antisemites, we are anti-Zionists. I already told you what it means to be a Zionist. It means believing that the Jewish people have a right to self-determination within their historic homeland, the land of Zion. Anti-Zionism doesn't simply mean the opposite of that since the Jews already have a homeland, have, they've already reestablished the homeland, the land of, the state of Israel. To be anti-Zionist means to support the annihilation of the state of Israel and with it either deport or murder the seven and a half million Jews who live there if they cannot find a place to go. Murdering seven and a half million Jews would be the biggest wet dream for all those antisemites who disguise themselves as not antisemitic but anti-Zionist. Of course, supporting the murder of one Jew is antisemitic if, if the motivation is hatred for Jews. Supporting the murder of seven and a half million Jews is antisemitism on a level even higher than Hitler because Hitler only managed to murder six million Jews. The filthy and disgusting antisemites who claim to be anti-Zionist but not antisemitic do not get credit for not wanting to murder the Jews who do not live in the land of Zion. Let me put it in a way that you would probably be more, that would probably be more related to you. Imagine the KKK saying that they're not racist because they love black people so long as the black people live in Africa. They hate the black people who live in America because the black people who live in America are settler colonialists. Would you agree with the KKK under this scenario that they're not racist? Of course you wouldn't because that argument would be nothing less than gaslighting. The same is true for the antisemites who claim to love Jews but hate the Zionists. So we need to fight all forms of filthy and disgusting antisemitism, no matter what side of the political spectrum the antisemites come from. In the last couple of years, the Long Beach City College boardroom has become a magnet for antisemites. The board needs to make the boardroom as unattractive to antisemites as possible. And that means calling out antisemitism whenever you see it and not letting antisemites gaslight us with some anti-Zionist label.
Thank you. This concludes our non-agenda public comment, section sixteen point one. We'll move to section seventeen, second closed session. There is going to be a second closed session at the end of this open session. We'll be adjourning into section, second session to go back to item one point, one point seven, public employee performance evaluation. And so we'll have that to close us out this evening. And at this point, we're going to adjourn our open session to section eighteen, eighteen point one. Our next regular meeting of the board trustees will be held June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, with closed session at four thirty, open session at five thirty. We're adjourning tonight, it is approximately. Sorry, July, July ninth. I'm, my printout is different than what's on the, the screen. I have a, and I'm just reading, I'm not even thinking here. Yeah, okay, correctly, the next meeting will be on July ninth, twenty twenty five, closed session at four thirty and open session at five thirty. At this point, we're going to adjourn, it is approximately eight thirty nine, into our second closed session. Thank you, everybody.
All right, we are reconvening out of our second closed session. It is now nine twenty eight P M. Going back to item seventeen. We concluded our closed session. We have no reportable action out of our second closed session. We'll move to item eighteen. Again, we're adjourning to our next regularly scheduled meeting of the board trustees, which will be held on July ninth twenty twenty five with closed session at four thirty and open session at five thirty. And just before closing, I'd just like to note, I reject all accusations of anti-Semitism. I respect all individuals and hold a deep respect for all individuals and reject any form of hatred and discrimination. And with that, we adjourn our meeting here at nine twenty nine. Everyone have a good evening.